No, he puts everything and uses it in the future.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. In regards to a closed meeting, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors here advised enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing upon discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body; one, parks and rec. commission; two, personnel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shatter?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shatter?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Chair of the House?
Aye.
Senate.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what that certification means is, it's our Board giving your, giving you our word that we're not talking about things in closed meetings that we're not supposed to be talking about. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shatter?
Aye.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
The next item is invocation. I'm gonna ask all of us to rise and observe a moment of silence. I would especially ask both to think about those that died in New York, Pennsylvania, and DC seven, or 16 years ago today. And then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda, now we've got Chris Price on our, I see Mr. Clark in the back, so I don't know, Dave, are you up?
He was, he was able to escape a meeting in Richmond today, so he was.
David Clark with VDOT will give us an update in regards to road and project issues in Montgomery County.
The meeting I was being called to in Richmond earlier this week is canceled due to hurricane type issues. They canceled it late last week, and I had asked Chris to attend on my behalf, and as it turns out, he didn't have to. Some updates, I don't have the list, I thought I had. Last time, one of the things that was asked about before were some speed limits on White Thorn, and we got those up, as well as one on Merrimack Road.
That's all there, yeah.
There were some brush cutting issues, and I know that was, I think they got the ones on Brooksfield. I know they've been working out Mount Zion, and they've done some, on several.
They've done a great job where they've been.
Yeah.
I hope they continue.
And our maintenance manager is in contact with Viveka Muma, with the Montgomery County School of Transportation, and trying to get the spots that are, that are worse. Here we go. We've got a couple of projects done. The City Church Road project is now complete. As far as the first project is, we've still got a project to do the rest of the road that will cut through all the way from Berry Church Road to Camp Carriesburg Road. Route 8 project there in Reiner is done. There may be a few more small things to take care of, but for the most part, that's done. We're working on some of the projects for next year. We're hoping to get another section of the yellow silver road done next year. This one will be on the Christiansburg end. If it works out well, we will get, we might get another section on the, on the Blacksburg end. Besides that, we've just been sort of doing basic maintenance type of, type of things, replacing some culverts, doing some ditching work out of Allegheny Springs Road. Keister's Ranch is where they were today, I think.
They were.
That was the other one I had on my list that I just found. And I've got a request through email that I'll bring to the Board now, and we can work through the specifics of it. As you all know, there's quite a process that takes place for no through truck restriction. We've had a request on Meadow Creek Road, which cuts between, for 600, around 600 or 177 there on the, on the Rafterd side, the other side of the hospital side of the interstate, and it cuts over to basically to Route 8. It's used as a shortcut or a way to get over to the hospital, just for folks coming from the Reiner area, but it is tough. It's an air road, and it's got its nickname for a reason, and tractor trailers have a hard time on there, staying on their side of the line. So that would be one that we could look at if it's, if the Board would like, and we could at least start the process for no through truck restriction on Meadow Creek Road, if you'd like. And there's a fairly well-defined process. It's gonna require a public hearing, and we can at least get that while rolling if the Board would want it.
Well, let's take up that issue. Is the Board willing to conduct public hearings in regards to, I know that this is something that Supervisor King has brought up a couple of different times, it runs through his district, about no through truck traffic on that road, as commonly referred to as the pick path. Is there?
Really is.
Is there a consensus that we should start moving forward?
I think so.
Mr. Moss?
I've never driven on the road, so I know, isn't that terrible?
It's a, it's a fun road if you're the only one on it.
Yeah.
But if there's traffic coming, it's not a lot of fun.
Yeah. So, based on everybody else's opinions, of course, I'd be interested in a public hearing.
All right. I think that's a step that we can do, and then I'm gonna switch it over. I'll start with Supervisor Shepherd about any questions he might have.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to add to your list, and if they can get to it, it's a dead-end road. I go up it twice a week with the bus. It's quidda-croholler, and it's just about grown shut. It's in really bad shape, but, and then I wanted to ask you, and I don't know if, if, on our agenda later on, we have a rural addition program in our work session. Can you speak to that a little bit, like how much funds are there, or if any, or how you'd come about that?
Sure, if I can do that right now if you'd like. Rural addition program is the means by which VDOT will take over the maintenance of a currently private road. The county is responsible for acquiring easements and right-of-way from the residents of this private road, assuring that there is, that we will get 40-foot of right-of-way, necessary easements, and utilities are out of the way. Once that, all that right-of-way is clear, VDOT is authorized to use a portion of your secondary road construction funds to build it to current state standards, and you're allowed to put 5% of your secondary construction funds in the rural addition fund. And we've done several in Montgomery County before, and we've been accumulating, every year I'll, I go ahead and go set that 5% aside, because it usually takes more than a couple of years' worth to, to build up enough to build one. I'm not sure of the total that you have right now. I believe it's somewhere in the $200,000 range, probably less than 250, maybe not. It's less than 300. And I know the Board has gone through several debates on, you know, because it's sometimes hard to get right-of-way. You start on one project, and you don't know until you've gone through the process of whether you can get the right-of-way donated or not. And so you can, I'm sure the county probably has a list of 10 roads right now that have all had people ask how their road brought into the state system. And so we just sort of start at the top, as the Board sets the priorities, and if we can get the right-of-way, we get it. If we can't, we move on to the next one. So, that's how it goes, and right now, I know you've had several of y'all looking at, but that money doesn't go away whenever, whenever we get one where we have a good estimate to get a certain section of the road in, and we have the right-of-way, we can build that road.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that the answer?
Yeah. Yes. Supervisor Demoss?
I'm trying to think of the correct phrasing for this question. Could you provide an update on the 460 North Main interchange, where that is now? And then also, just from, from reading updates from the town of Blacksburg and speaking with citizens, it sounds like there might be a road closure in the county as part of that project. They might dead-end Bishop Road, or do some sort of different construction on county roads that are just right outside of the town line. So could you provide us with some updates on that?
There was a public hearing held on August 31st in Blacksburg. Comments were taken. There are various display boards showing what was, what's proposed right now. They've only gone through probably about 30% of the design. There can be, you know, changes to the current design. We still have to stay within the budget that was provided as part of the application for the town of Blacksburg to do the project. There's nothing to be added that would, that would kill that budget. Bishop Road is a town road that intersects 460. There are options of looking at. You've got just a lot of roads intersecting along there, and closing Bishop Road access is one option. Trying to provide access from it to North Main could be part of that solution. The full, final design has not been done, and I don't think even all the comments, the comment period is still actually open. I think it was opened through, through today. So, once the comments have been gathered and analyzed, and, you know, usually there's a response of some kind.
Are there follow-up opportunities for citizen input at future meetings? Or was that the last meeting for citizen involvement?
That was the last one, as far as I know, for public comment.
Okay. And then switching gears a little bit, from the Mount Tabor Road through truck restriction. Has Renoke County scheduled their public hearing on that?
I don't think they have yet. I think we've done our part. We may end up, I'll follow up as well.
I don't think so.
I'm seeing shaking heads in the audience that yes, it's scheduled. I have heard tomorrow at 3:00 PM.
That's not good.
I had not heard from, well, that's when I-
Their Board of Supervisors meets in the afternoon.
They meet at 2:00.
Wow. Okay.
And I can have a more up-to-date plan on where that is. I can do it next month, but I can do it before that, so you know what's going on with that.
Great.
I can send something to county staff and get you updated, very late, just without waiting a whole month.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bix?
Okay. The only thing I want to bring up is Interstate 81. I brought it up at the last meeting, and what I'd like to know, I've been talking to some General Assembly members, and I know the ones that represent localities on the Interstate 81, you know, through Shenandoah all the way up to Northern Virginia, have concerns too. Now, I know it's a federal interstate highway, but what I would like to know is, is there communication back and forth at all with VDOT and, and, you know, the accidents that are occurring, the, the fact that there are too many cars, the volume, that the interstate can't handle it, bumper to bumper, we had a death in Montgomery County, and every time there's an accident, the localities have to provide the fire and rescue. And while they're providing fire and rescue and police, possibly, on the interstate, if something happens in their locality, they're not covered or they have to. So I'm really concerned about it. I think it's out of control, and I think the answer is that there's not enough money is just unacceptable, because it's a safety issue. So what I was wondering, do you know of anything or any kind of conversation that's going on that maybe, you know, we could be involved in?
I'll see, I know there's conversation going on. There's an 81 Coalition, not just within the counties and the areas of Virginia, but even multi-state discussion going on. The 81 Coalition has been very active for years, and that, each state, of course, is responsible for their own section of it, and we've got a couple of projects going on or upcoming, it'll be several years, but they're, they're looking at the section between Exit 141 and 143 northbound. They're looking at some of the curves up in, up in the Buchanan area, around the 162 area. There's some spot type of issues being looked at, and then design going on right now for some safety, but nothing as far as, you know, full-scale widening, adding another lane for 300 miles.
It's also an economic development issue, and it's also a quality of life issue, because when you pull the cars and trucks off 81 and you reroute them in a detour, then it's affecting all of the small places that aren't used to that kind of traffic going through. So I just think, you know, if we really want Virginia to really sort of move ahead, we're gonna have to move the traffic some way. So, anything that you can find out, I mean, I would love to be involved in a conversation about that.
Okay. And I was not at the MPO, joint MPO meeting a couple of weeks ago with Renoke, but I believe Ken Ken gave a presentation on Interstate 81.
He was.
He did, and-
You may have a copy of that already, I can get a copy of that.
He did make a presentation, and, you know, of course, the, the concern that was brought up was, because Ms. Perkins brought up the issue, and, and Ken very aptly answered, it's a challenge with funding, trying to get the funding to address it. And we understand that, but it seems like every week we're, we're having other issues, and unfortunately, when things are happening on Interstate 81 now, it, it's loading up the town of Christiansburg and just creates other issues.
That one a couple of weeks ago, I couldn't even, I couldn't get through.
It tied up.
I tried to go take a look there. I couldn't even, I saw it briefly there from Debo Street, and had, I just had to turn on Park, Park Street to get it. I've been there for hours trying to get through, just look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, one of the things we are, we're doing, and this doesn't address it completely, but we're, VDOT just within the Salem District is, every week now, we have a conference call on all of the areas of VDOT within the Salem District to discuss planned work, emergency-type work, what other types of events are going on, and how we can avoid impacting traffic if possible. Your work has to get done on the interstate, you're always gonna affect it somehow, but, but we're really trying to do a much more coordinated effort from, you know, the Baritat Rock Ridge line all the way to the Pulaski Lift Line, of making sure, at least in our counties that we're doing, we're not doing anything to make it any worse by doing work, or if we know something going on, or if there is an accident, how can we better respond? There's lots of stuff you can do with a detour. You can, you know, you don't want to detour things through downtown Christiansburg or through Radford. We've talked about sending them down Route 11 if it happens between, between Christiansburg and Aronto. That brings its own set of problems, as you're getting all that truck traffic through Charlesville and Ellison. There really is no perfect solution to it. We're trying to minimize these 10-plus mile backups, because you've got people sitting there for hours on the, on the interstate. That's one issue. And then, like you said, you've got emergency people tied up, trying to get to that, trying to, you know, do that, and it ties up the stuff in town, so yeah.
And even affects schools, you know, like if they're trying to get kids back home and, yeah.
So we're well aware that we're trying to do as much coordination as possible. Of course, I can't do anything about the funding part, that's more General Assembly and Commonwealth Transportation Board decisions, but we're trying to do whatever we can here at the local level.
Thank you.
I think, to do with this, Craig, didn't he say that they were gonna start on that 141 to 143 in October?
There is funding, I think, in the plan to add an additional lane between the, between mile marker 141 and 143.
Basically, you're getting on at that Mason Creek exit or entrance to the interstate.
Takes it up to 581.
That lane will just keep on going to the 581.
581, yeah.
Because right now, you get a lot of, trying to move over into that right lane, it's clogging up everything.
Yeah, well, what I was thinking, it's going to make travel even worse for that period of time, even though they're trying to work on the right, you know, to put a new lane in, it's still going to add to the confusion and-
Yeah, anytime we have construction going on, you know, we've got construction going on right now northbound at the Pulaski Montgomery Line, the bridge. Now, that's gonna be done out of traffic, but we won't have traffic down to one lane, except a very short, we've already had to do it a couple of times. But that's planned, and we can do it in the middle of the night, especially as we also build the bridge at Exit 105 over 81. When you set beams, you have to stop traffic for a while, but we'll certainly have that coordinated and planned and try to do it to not affect the traffic much. But there's always, you know, large construction projects draw people's attention away from the road, and it's, it's its own issue. You try to reduce the speed through there, and we do so much by putting up speed lanes on.
Supervisor King?
I just have a couple of things. Where are we at on Brush Creek?
Brush Creek, we probably, we will not get to the upper end of Brush Creek this year. It's a revenue-sharing project, and I apologize for that. We'll, we'll try to get to that next year.
We told everybody we're gonna start on that this year.
I know, I understand. It's just, we just had so much stuff going on, we couldn't get to that this year.
Can you put it on first list for next year?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, very first list?
Yeah.
Okay. And Fairview Church Road, what in the world are we doing out there?
Yeah, I had a, I'm not sure, I haven't been out there to look at that. I had questions about that earlier. I'll check. I think, hoping what that is, I haven't seen a paving schedule completely, that, that it's a service treatment that is eventually gonna be what we call a cape seal, which means you come back with slurry over top of it, but you do have to wait 30 days after you put the service treatment down to do a slurry seal on top of that.
They turned a paved road into a gravel road.
Yeah, and it may, if it was already on a service treated road, then that's the type of service that was on there before. It just takes a while for it to, for the loose grapples to settle out.
And what about the Low Water Bridge?
It's still on, it's on the six-year notice, it's still in design.
Thought we was gonna do that this year.
Oh, no, I, I don't think I ever said we were gonna get that completed this year. We started in design this year.
Thanks.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, I'm glad Ms. Bix brought up the whole question of 81. I wondered also if you've had a chance to see any of those bridge crossings that I was talking about.
I did, I went to the one, and maybe I didn't have the right one, but I didn't see any kind of immediate maintenance needs on the one right there at Hales.
No, no. It's just this way, that, that bridge top, but the one, it's one before you actually get to Ellison proper. And, and then there's another one just before you get to Ellison that is fine, but this one, you, you know what I'm talking about, Gary?
Right on, I'm listening.
Because it's just patched in so many different spots, and it looks to me as if it should be resurfaced and taken care of.
Is that the one before you get to, right after you pass Hales, running the curve? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, well, it will. There's one, it goes like this, and then this one is one that's before you get to Ellison.
I'll just check and see if they have any maintenance plans. They, they do these large projects where they do deck resurfacing on several bridges all at once, and I'll see if that one's on the-
If it's on the, yeah, on the schedule somewhere.
They keep pretty good tabs on those. They have a bridge maintenance management program.
Yeah.
It's pretty stringent.
Yeah, well, they've done some really good things down in that whole area, but there are a couple of them that are just really difficult to kind of go across, and you, you run into a lot of patchwork. And that brings me to ask, what about all the patchwork we're doing on 460 bypass? We're just, we seem to be doing a little section here and another little section somewhere else as we're getting onto 460 in the Christiansburg area. Is that the way we're gonna do from there on?
Like the on-ramps?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they patch the on-ramps as best they can. Most of the money is put on the main line, but I'll go up and see if there's a schedule for the, for the ramps. That tends to be an issue, because you try to put most of our money on the main line.
Right. Well, there is one ramp that, if you're getting ready to go up on, on, onto the 81, and that is so beaten up and chumped up that I can't, I can't even believe it's still there, that, as a ramp like that. So I can't tell you exactly where it is, but I do know that it is in very, very poor condition, so I thought maybe we might want to look at that.
Supervisor Creed?
Anything on bonus on ya?
No, I know we've been working with some of the counties to figure out if that's what we're, there's a revenue-sharing project that we had for a section down in the bridge and the, and the river. I think it was decided by the county that we were not gonna do that section, we might move to a separate section further on. It's a revenue-sharing project, so, you know, whatever the county would like to do with that revenue-sharing money, we'll be delighted to do.
I've just had, moved out of the people, wanna know what's going on, I don't have anything that I can tell them.
No, most of them.
David, thank you very much for your presentation. The next item on our agenda is Alliance for Better Childcare, and Ms. Moss is here to address the Board.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you an update. I do have presentations, so let me just load it. The Alliance for Better Childcare Strategies, as you may know, was created because a stronger and more prosperous Montgomery County depends on attracting and retaining today's workforce talent, as well as nurturing and developing young children, just tomorrow's talent. As you know, the world has changed, and many millennials are now entering the workplace saddled with large student loans and have both the desire and the need to pursue full-time careers. And so our economic prosperity now and in the future depends on having this high-quality full-time early education and childcare. AECs was formed with a mission of strengthening our community to create more childcare, better quality childcare, as well as more affordable childcare. The challenge for more childcare is because Montgomery County is officially a childcare desert. We have 5,000 children under the age of five, and places in hot centers and homes for less than 1,150 children. And quality care is even more challenging to access. One center, in fact, has a waiting list of more than 1,000 children. This lack of access to quality childcare affects recruitment of companies to the county, as well as, of course, employee productivity. We've done a number of things to address this, including recruiting two new childcare companies into the county. One of them, Rainbow Childcare Centers, not to be confused with Rainbow Riders, is opening a center before the end of the year, as well as building a brand-new facility, which is expected to be opened in 2018. We're also in discussions with another provider that's expecting to open a center in 2018. However, centers are not the only option. We're also holding seminars to recruit new licensed family home providers, and looking at other creative options from corporate-based childcare to churches. On the better quality childcare, we have been doing a number of partnerships, including one with Workforce Virginia and Virginia Quality, encouraging everyone in the childcare industry to at least have the bottom-line credential of a Child Development Associate certification, as well as encouraging further education, such as taking the Certivity Program at the Davenport Institute, which is at the river. Other things we're doing include the launching the Igniting Connections Annual Professional Symposium, which will be next month at the Inn of Virginia Tech. This is for every New York Valley, every childcare teacher in centers and in home care, as well as every pre-K head start kindergarten teacher, has been invited to this professional development symposium. development symposium and collaboration opportunity. We also launched in June with the support of the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, the Montgomery County Early Educator Teacher Award, which was a $500 cash award, as well as a scholarship to the professional symposium. Now, the last one is more affordable childcare, and why is this a critical issue? Well, obviously, if you, if your children are in quality childcare, you can pursue full-time work, you can be more productive, and this helps our prosperity today. However, the financial reality of quality childcare is extremely harsh. As you know, 36% of our county lives in 200% of the poverty rate or below, yet a family of four earning this would have to spend 40% of their gross income in order to access and pay for quality childcare for an infant in preschool. Many economically disadvantaged families cannot access this quality childcare due to long, DSS waiting lists, low reimbursement rates, and if you happen to be at 151% of poverty rate, you're ineligible for any kind of assistance or tuition support. We know the science, we've known it for decades now, about the importance of brain development and it's starting at birth. And in fact, lots of research shows that investing in early education has a return of more than 10%, which far exceeds any other sort of support or intervention for children and families. One famous research study looked at children who had attended a quality preschool environment and assessed them, surveyed them at age 40. The children who were in this program group were in the blue line, and as you can see, they are far less likely to be involved in the criminal justice system, they're far more likely to be middle class, graduation from high school rates are much higher, and in fact, IQ is higher. So if we want to create productive citizens who have successful lives and go on to be taxpayers, early education is really the key solution. And you don't have to just take my word for it, but we're gonna take a minute to hear Virginia Tech's Craig Remy talk a little bit about this, just a two-minute video.
My good friends, June Hatt, the year 2000, the Bell O'Leary Economics drew this curve which summarizes probably close to $100 million worth of investments in the United States in various programs designed to improve the life circumstances of people who start life with some threats against them. We send them to do the job of training, we send them to do professional education. This curve suggests that the single best investment we can make is in pre-K education. Not only do these programs pay for themselves, but they return a regular investment, the Jim has calculated to average 10%. Any of you guys getting 10% on your money right now? Both of those are plus. These programs pay for themselves before children are even out of grade school, they return investments as high as 10 to 1. So why are we here? Here we are in Blacksburg, in Roanoke, in these beautiful valleys. We have wonderfully educated people and we have about 20% of people who are in real dire straits. That has education that the future's gonna require. Without the skills to participate in our democracy, without the skills to hold positions of real responsibility, can't we do something that will change lives, that will give people a better start? Many of you here are in various professions dealing with pre-K children. You are my heroes. You, you make things happen every day that change people's lives, but we must, I would argue, be more systematic about that. And whether you're a little, up in a little road, or a staunchly conservative, it comes out to the same place. None of us gain if other people suck and cost society resources and don't play their part. So you can be altruistic, you can be selfish, coming out of the same place, I think, but the question that I leave is, what are some of the really practical things that could be done here in Blacksburg, in the New River Valley, beginning tomorrow, that would make
So, among the other impacts and strategies that we, ABCs, is trying to make a difference is the Impact Families Impact Law Scholarship Program. We're working on this to make us a healthier, more prosperous county. And just in closing, while I'm here today, I wanted to give you an update on the strategies that we are doing right now to help build a stronger childcare infrastructure for economic development in Montgomery County. And in closing, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to consider reinstating the $13,333 in funding that we had received last year, but did not receive this year today, so that ABCs can continue to make an impact. We want to impact both today's workforce and tomorrow's workforces. Thank you for your time. And if we have a matter to, I'd like to bring one of our board members, David Moore, with me, because he had some direct stories to tell about this.
Yeah, so I'm here to really speak as an employer, and I wanted to tell you a story about a hire I made back in 2007. I had to do grant-funded project, had to hire five or six new employees, recruiting a couple people from out of state, a young lady from Delaware, had a fantastic interview on the phone, hired her site unseen, had just the experience we were looking for, a real talent. She was relocating to the area with her spouse, who was in the military, had been reassigned to the Ranford Army Ammunition Plant. And, yeah, they moved down about two or three weeks before she was due to start. And the Friday before the Monday that she was due to start, she called me, virtually in tears. I said, "Mr. Moore, I hate today this, but I can't come to work on Monday morning. I can't find childcare for my two young children." She had a toddler and a preschool. This, this was not an issue any other place we've ever lived. I, like I said, she was a tal, real talent, I was glad to have her on our team. I said, "Take a couple weeks, see what you can find." And she did, it took her two or three weeks, she did find something and got her kids in someplace, but I tell you, it was not a place that she felt was safe and enriching environment for her children. Yet every morning, she had to make that choice and go and drop her kids off at a place she did not feel very good about and come to work. And she did come to work, but that, as good an employee as she was, that was a significant distraction to her the entire time that she worked for me, the entire time, two years that her kids worked here, like that. And it's not gotten, that was in 2007, it's not gotten a lot different even today. Back in, when the board and I were putting together the strategic plan for ABCs, Joe Barrett at the Corporate Research Center did a survey of employees at the CFC, and I believe it was 21% responded to that survey, reported that at least one parent in the household who wanted to be in the workforce was out of the workforce solely because of childcare issues. 20%, that's a lot of talent sitting on the sideline for this reason. What's more, 24% responded to that survey, reported that their current childcare situation was either stressful or very stressful. And this, these are not low-income, though, these are people making $86,000 to $120,000 a year, and it's a major issue for them. Today, I want a Department of Labor grant program. I'll pay for training and childcare for, for people to go into high-tech careers in information technology, advanced manufacturing, and healthcare. I've got the training providers, the jobs are there, I've got money to pay the childcare, but in a lot of places in the New River Valley and Montgomery County, I can't get a spot to help someone improve their education and go into this kind of career. I can find it random, but I can't always find it here. So that's why it's really important to have somebody that wakes up every day thinking about this issue for our community, and we do really appreciate the support that allows that happen as well.
Supervisor Creed, do you have any questions? Supervisor Perkins?
No, I, well, I just have a statement. Having been there and done that, I took my total amount of retirement from Montgomery County when my son was born, was $333. And my husband was in school, and we had no income, and I stayed home with my child until my mother retired, and she came to live with us and lived in this area for, until she died. So it was very difficult then. There was really only one place that I knew of. Most people put their children in somebody's home. I know that it's still a problem, I can appreciate what David's saying, and I really know that, or I believe, you know, our county does have a preschool, a pre-K program. There has to be some new ways that we can think about putting more people in this industry. And the people who work in the industry really do not garner large salaries. So I think it's a very important, I know from my own studies, it's very, very important to have that done. I don't have any great thing to offer right now, but I would think that a group of people could get together and start thinking about this in a very positive, proactive way to try to help this along. I don't know how much the, the school system is involved in it.
Yes, they, they are on our board, Dr. Meyer is on our board, and Dr. Graham is the one who attends most of the meetings and is most active, and they've been great supporters.
Sure.
You know, we're implementing strategies across the, the board on the more childcare, better childcare, more affordable childcare, even though they seem to conflict, but they are necessary and it's, it's part of creating an entire infrastructure of support so that people can work and so that children, when they get to kindergarten, will be ready for kindergarten and be successful.
Right, yeah. Well, I just appreciate what you're doing, I think it's.
Well, it's, I can't think of anything more important or with greater impact.
I can't either.
I mean, so it, it makes sense to me, it's, it's head and heart, as, as Dr. Remy said, it doesn't matter what the politics are, this makes economic sense, even if you don't look at it any other way. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor King? Supervisor Pigs?
Well, I wanna thank you for your passion and for what you've done to get the word out about the program. Now, you're speaking to the choir when you speak to me, because of my degree in early childhood education, along with education, and the science is there. These children are like sponges, and they're soaking everything up. And if you can provide a good, quality preschool program, childcare program, it's going to go a long way. You pay for it now, you're gonna pay for it later. When those kids come in and everyone else in the kindergarten room is ready to roll, and they're not, they start out behind. And then it just progresses, goes all the way through the system, and I think we all seen the statistics about what happens later on with who gets involved in doing things that end up in the criminal justice department. I feel very strongly about it, I'd like to reinstate the money. I do have a question, a couple of questions. First of all, I saw your advertisement to get childcare people certified, did you have a lot of people come forward to do that?
The Family Home Seminar?
Yes.
Not so far, it's been at limited success, but in terms of recruiting participants, we are looking for our next seminar to be at the library, because they have a much stronger publicity machine than, than me dropping all flyers at pre-utriations offices and other things, but, but we feel it is a real need, childcare centers are not the only solution.
Right.
But we want, so much of the family home providers in this market is unlicensed or under the table, and we want it to be licensed and on the Virginia Quality track, for which there's now, they're going to be financially incented for that as well in terms of reimbursements, so it's important.
So tell me, if this money were reinstated, what would it be going toward, and are the other partners that started out reinstating their money?
The, the town of Blacksburg has never taken away its funding, it, it's kept it going. In terms of Christiansburg, because of the financial stresses that the town was under, they did not refund us for the second year, but we have asked to have another presentation and to be considered again, if not immediately, then hopefully in the near future. We have very strong funding from Virginia Tech, that recognizes that they are one of the big economic drivers in this market, as well as healthcare, banks, and, and other businesses in the market.
So where would the money be spent this coming year? Like, what, what are your plans for the money?
Uh, well, part, part of it, I mean, the biggest part of our operating budget right now is to compensate me, our organization is an organization of one. And unfortunately, I can't work for free, so I'm sole supporter of my, my family, and, but we are also using it in budget lines, include the CBA certificates, where we're funding CBAs that Virginia Quality cannot, they're very restrictive now on what CBAs they can and where they are. Well, we want, my goal is to have every single childcare educator in Montgomery County at least have a CBA, and then be encouraged to take the next step, and then, you know, enroll in the Davenport Institute, become a true educated professional. So that's another example, there are the seminars, there's the symposium that was, this first one is one that we're doing for the entire region, will be an annual education symposium. It's really important to provide free professional development, as well as providing those connections so that there's a collaboration between the people who are in the childcare industry and the people who are in VPI and in kindergarten. So there, and as well as the recruitment of new centers and meetings and other things. So it's, it's, it's everything, it's multi-passive. We're also launching a scholarship program, and that we are doing with a one-on-one philanthropic fundraising, because that's, that's the way that it's gonna work.
So you're training people for jobs that are needed?
Yes.
And by training people for jobs that are needed, it helps with the workforce that needs the kind of care? So it's very much economic development, it's very much education, so?
That is true, and that's, it's, it's several aspects, and that is why Workforce Virginia is actually helping support some of the CBAs here, because even though childcare kills their average wage statistics, they realize that people have to have childcare in order to, to be successful at work.
It's always hard to pinch for your own salary, so I'm happy to answer that question. So Bethany's already done a tremendous job in recruiting potentially two new center-based programs.
Which are new businesses in the community.
New business, indeed, both in the Blacksburg area, the west of Montgomery County, and Christiansburg also has needs, and you can build buildings, but quality education helps your teachers. And childcare centers already have a hard time finding.
And childcare centers already have a hard time finding quality features. So in order to staff those new centers, which are on their way, she needs to turn her attention to workforce. And building a workforce is a core quality education. We have to, like I said, family day homes, a lot of the care that people need are evening shifts, like from a lot of the train that I send people to, the evening, weekend, and other off shifts that's not provided by centers. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And it's not something that's on either of the officers' agenda or plan to do. So that's why he seems to, Bethany, thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
As I shared with you, of course, I'm extremely supportive of the mission of your organization. And I certainly don't have the education chops of Supervisor Perkins and Supervisor Biggs, but as a mom, and, and as someone who spent many years, from the time my son was an infant until well into elementary school, as a single mom, I personally have a, a connection with the work that you're doing because it did limit my career. And so, of course, I am very supportive and, and would like our board to consider reallocating funding towards ABCs. And I really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for giving the opportunity.
Supervisor Shepherd? I just want to say thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and give you an update.
I've got a few questions for you.
Okay.
When we came, and it was the first year of funding, it's my understanding that there was going to be some private sector funds that came in to help supplement. Can you give me an idea of how much private funds that you were able to raise to provide, as far as funding?
We are working on, well, we, we have private sector funding from, as I said, Virginia Tech is, is, has, has a large share of the economic burden, as well as healthcare, banking, and other smaller sector corporations. We're also looking, sorry.
I was going to ask, do you have a dollar figure? How much have you been able to raise? And I consider Virginia Tech to be a public sector.
Okay.
But if you could, as I understood it from a couple of years back, there was going to be some private sector funding. And I'm just curious, how much has the private sector stepped up to address?
Okay. Well, and of course, I, I wasn't here a couple of years ago, so I don't know what was, but in the, you know, eight, nine months that I've been here, we've had consistent support. For example, Corillian has re-upped ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars again. I expect Lewis Gale and hoping that they will do the same, or that they will come into it. Banks have been, there have been several banks that are supporters for smaller amounts of money. And Virginia Tech, which you're considering the public sector, has made a three-year commitment of fifty thousand dollars a year.
Okay. And, and it looks like the private sector, so in the past private sector, you said Corillian had given, Lewis Gale's you're hoping to get. And so can I ask, what is, it sounds like ten thousand dollars and then some smaller amounts. Is that, is, is it fifteen thousand from the private sector?
Gosh, I don't have, County Corillian?
County Corillian, yes, Corillian.
Yeah, it's more than fifteen, it's less than twenty.
Okay. Now, also, when I was here, Christiansburg committed for one year, and they said they would pay for one year but not any further. It, it's my understanding from their first year of commitment. There was some talk that New River would also contribute, New River Community College, did they, have they contributed?
New River has not been able to yet at this time. Of course, they've been in a leadership transition, so I don't know what the future will hold.
In regards to, in my understanding also, there's, is it two more years on top of that that you would be asking for additional funding? On top of this year?
No, one more year in addition to this year.
Okay. And you talked about scholarships. And, and you and I, when we had lunch together, we talked about that the ACE program is, actually would provide scholarships, two years, so if they could go for free. And that's upcoming for every high school senior in Montgomery County. Help me to understand where your scholarships would be different, because we've got this huge influx of potentially as many as four hundred kids that will be going into the ACE program this coming year.
Okay. Our scholarship program, which is not on our budget, it's, it's going to be a separate program. We're going to have a hundred percent of the scholarships contributions we get go directly into supporting these children. There are a couple of reasons that it's very important. When I looked at the economic infrastructure, right now we have a situation where the best childcare center in Montgomery County pays, their, their top wages are equivalent to, are ten dollars and forty cents, which is what you get when you walk in the door to Walmart. So tuition needs to come up overall throughout the infrastructure in order to bring up the wages. There's no other place that this money is going to come from. But in order to do that, we need to have a, a really robust scholarship program. Otherwise, we'll end up with our economically disadvantaged children falling further and further behind because they'll be less, less likely to be able to afford the quality childcare centers. So that is the rationale. The scholarship helps prevent having a two-tiered system while putting injected more cash into the overall childcare infrastructure.
And I guess, I understand, so we've got potentially four hundred scholarships out there for rising seniors this year. And you were talking about a few scholarships. And do you see what I'm saying? Would it be, we would be better, more, spent, of putting more money into the ACE program, maybe potentially providing more scholarships there? Than putting it, and in no disrespect, the studying of problem, we would actually be trying to address the problem.
Well, I am not seeking any public funding at this point at all for any of the scholarship programs. I'm more doing that purely on a foundation and one-on-one philanthropic basis. But I would say that these children are not going to be able to qualify for the ACE's program unless we give them a good start and get them ready for kindergarten. So it's, it's a, I mean, I, I would argue that you need to work on the brain development and, and support, social, emotional, and other support before they ever get to kindergarten in order so that they can really take advantage of the ACE's program.
As I understand your program, you're trying to recruit daycareers. But one of the issues that you've mentioned is one of our best providers, or one of them that's deemed to be the best provider, charges under what is normal market value.
Yep.
And so it makes other of the larger daycare providers nationally reluctant to come into the New River Valley because they don't feel that they can compete with that, that business. Is that?
That has been a problem. The two, the providers, I mean, for instance, Rainbow Childcare Center got to know this market because they, they operate Bradford Early Learning Center. And when they come into Montgomery County, they are not going to be pricing themselves lower than your, your referenced childcare center. So there is a, there is recognition that those that all, but it's not going to hap, it's going to be incremental. This is nothing, this is a very fragile system. All changes are going to need to be incremental when it comes to tuition.
All right. I know I had a lot of questions. Thank you very much for answering them.
Okay. Did that answer anything?
Can we get a copy of her presentation?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's right there, but.
We'll get it distributed. Thank you, Bethany.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public address. This is the board's opportunity to listen to citizens. Each citizen will be allowed to come and address the board of supervisors for five minutes. This is not our chance to engage with you. This is not a question and answer session, rather this is, y'all have to listen to us on a regular basis. This is our turn to listen to you. I'll ask you to state your name and address. There's several people signed up. And the first person I have is Rin Na, is it Spring?
Rin Na. This is Rin Na, my name is Na.
Yes, ma'am. You may come forward. I, I just have the, is it two of you signed up together with us?
Yes.
Okay. I, I wasn't certain the way it was signed up. Whoever wishes to speak first, you'll have five minutes, and the next person would have an additional five minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, we thought you were, we didn't, yeah, we thought you was five minutes, we didn't get it.
Okay. That'll be fine. If, both of you would state your names and addresses, and then you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Dear Supervisor, good, good evening. Thank you for your service and thank you for opportunity for me to be able to speak tonight. My name is Rin Na Zhang, and I came here about twelve years ago and joined my husband together. My husband would come here for a professor of Virginia Tech. So our family moved here, we had two children at that time. When we moved here, we have different options. We have other options in terms of different communities, but we truly come here because, and we know that Virginia Tech is a great university and have a mission of a living future. And we know that Blacksburg is a great community that save, brings a family and children. And we know that Montgomery County Public School and provide a good public school education for our children. So with other options, we truly come here. Over the last twelve years, and we witnessed, we've been here for twelve years, and over the last twelve years, we have witnessed the growth of the university and the buil, the beauty and the strength of the community. And, but we feel one thing behind in foreign language education in Montgomery Public, Public Company School. So as, I don't need to say much, and you all witnessed, we all witnessed the great community and the growth of the different parts of the community, as I talk about Virginia Tech. And Virginia Tech is growing and have a great mission of growing better in enrollment and in research funding. And we check Virginia Tech's ranking each year, their rankings increasing. So we all agree, Virginia Tech is, is growing. And we all agree, in the last twelve years, I witnessed the, the beauty of Blacksburg. Whenever the tragedy happens, the community put together, showed the strength and resilience. So this is a great community. But foreign language education in our public school has not increased at all, but has been reduced. The foreign language subject was cut by network and by funding. So as our community grows, we are behind. We did not catch the pace growing together with our community, but we are behind. And I don't need to say the importance of foreign language education. We all know foreign language education is important. It's an important part of our children's growth, our children's education. It's important to prepare them, our next generation, to face the world. But we are behind. So here we just have a few numbers to show you that foreign language education in the county is behind. So in, they are thirteen thousands and five hundred oh six school district among the country. In the nation, we have thirteen, about thirteen, thirteen thousands and five hundred school district. So among them, Latin language was provided in about fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred school district. So that is ten percent, ten percent of a school district offering Latin, Latin as second, as a foreign language. So over that, over these, about thirteen thousands school district over the nation, about three thousand seven hundred offers French as a foreign language. So that put about thirty percent. So thirty percent of a school district offering French as secondary or foreign language over the nation. And Chinese, over these thirteen thousands school district over the nation, Chinese was offered in one thousand, one hundred forty-four school district. So about ten percent, nine percent of the school district over the nation offering Chinese as a foreign language education. And for German, over these thirteen thousand five hundred school district among the nation, over the nation, and fifteen hundred and forty-eight school district offering German as a second, as a foreign language. So that put around ten percent. As you can see, over the nationwide, about ten percent of the school district offering more foreign language as, as a second or third foreign language. So we are behind. And, you know, over the caliber of our community, we are way about ten percent of the nation, but our foreign language is behind. So we're not catching up with a great community we belong to as regarding foreign language education. So to talk about.
Your, and then, does anyone have any objections to extending them time? But I, I do want to take this time to clarify one thing. The school, the board of supervisors provides funding for the schools, but the schools get to decide how to spend that funding and the curriculum. And we're happy to listen to you, and, and I'll let you continue to address, but I, I wanted to bring that to your attention, that we do not get to pick the school's curriculum. That is the school board's job, and Dr. Meyer, who's with us this evening.
I see. So I think is, my point is, you know, the school, why public schools not have the education is because of funding problem. If they have enough funding, they will have more, you know, more resource and manpower to provide the foreign language education. So, so I'm sorry, so I did not really know, you know, what's the, but I just want to say, our foreign language education in the public school is behind. Therefore, we need more funding to provide that opportunity for the students. And even in state of Virginia, we are behind. In state of Virginia, we have one hundred thirty-one school district, and forty-seven of them offering, I think, Chinese as a second language. So they're put, thirty percent of them have Chinese as a foreign language, but we're behind. My point is, if I waste your time, I feel so sorry for that.
No.
And my, my point is, foreign language education in a great community is behind. So we desperately need the funding for you to, funding to help the public school to pick up the problem, therefore, and catch up with the, with the other part of the great community we have.
Thank you.
My name is Na Ren, and I work at Virginia Tech in Research Administration field. And I have two girls, they both go to Montgomery County. I really appreciate your service and available contribution to our county. I want to add a couple of points to Belinda's presentation. As we have noticed, that Montgomery County Public School has been, the budget has been cut a couple of times. So like, teachers benefit, foreign language program, gifted program, they're all like hard-gated area. So it's just, the impact of a budget cut may, on student achievement, may not be, may not be identified immediately through, by using the current assessment, especially like in rural area, and especially from in, mixed with a rural area and the big city of Blacksburg. But it's not necessary that the budget impact, budget cut doesn't have any impact on this public school system. So actually, especially on some under-resourced area, like teachers benefit, that will bring down teachers' morale and also like a foreign language, foreign language program, that's, that's the useful tool to bridge, bridge MCPS with the world and bring those keys work out to the world and bring back more opportunities. So thank you so, we really appreciate your time, listen to our presentation, and listen to our voice and understand our concern. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Ms. Sandy Sladek.
Said I like to come here and speak because you've struggled with my name. You've already seen my letter regarding the VDOT, our cut. Appreciate you asking questions.
Before you get started.
Oh, sorry, Sandy Sladek, four two five four four two, Strad Blacksburg, Virginia.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Tuck was nice enough to send me some of the resolutions and papers and things that you had signed or created. But there wasn't, in my mind, enough information regarding, from the resolutions. I don't know how anybody like me or the people that are up in Rushmount in the states would have known that the semis, the understanding that VDOT has is that the semis are going to be going through residential neighborhoods. I don't know if you've been up there, but the roads are not very wide. I mean, they're big enough for two cars, but when you think of cars, children, pets, semis, it's not a very good mix. And I'm not sure that they understand the people up there, or that VDOT really understands what, what the hazards are of doing that. When I asked them if they'd done a mortality study as far as, because I think the reason they wanted to change the intersection is because of the people that have died, which more people have died at that intersection, I think that any- more people have died at that intersection than I think that any intersection I've lived near. And I think something needs to be done, but I think the Tom's Creek resolution is a much better resolution. I think they're just moving the problem from town, where the ambulances in town, people are going to, police are going to deal with it, to the county. And when I said, I don't know if you all have done the math for the pipeline, we're still hoping and praying that's not coming, but just doing the math of two of three, they can hold, the semis can hold three of the pipes, 50 feet long, the pipeline is 303 miles, do the math, it's almost 33,000 semis that are going to be transporting these pipes. Now, I don't know that any of them are coming down 460 or would have to do that turn, I don't know, but I don't think VDOT knows either. And when I spoke with the gentleman here, he said, Mountain Valley really has done very little conversation with VDOT as to what's going to happen, other than where they want to cross or where they want to do different things. So I know the comment period ended today, I don't know if you all, being the Board of Supervisors, has any more clout than the average citizen, but I highly encourage you to do more to help them understand what they're proposing. I don't know if the people that have done this, that are in Salem, have driven through Brush Mountain Estates. I live in Brush Mountain Estates, I feel very sorry for those people. I don't know that VDOT has come and looked at this. I don't know that VDOT, when I said, what about the pipeline trucks, these people looked at me like, hmm, what are you talking about? I don't know that the people in Salem are aware of what possibly could go on, on these roads. But I would like to encourage you to write more letters or do more things to try to get this more safe, a safer environment for the people, really, all around. I live on Fortress Drive, which is where the proposed U-turn, and they're going to, I guess, expand one of those. I will tell you, when I come out of Fortress Drive at night, there's no, you know, maybe having some lights there would help, you know, like streetlights, but for me to get across 460, avoiding the traffic going to Perrysburg, and then having to wait and try to judge the cars that are coming down Brush Mountain in the dark, it's very difficult for me to do that, to determine, you know, just how close they really are to that cut through. And with other cars who will be also possibly in line, again, with brightness, trying to, you know, adjust your eyes to trying to see these cars coming down and how close they are, it's just a really bad situation. So, I have one totally different question, since I think I still have a little bit of money. I have a dog who's spayed. Every three years, I get a rabies shot for her, and that triggers something in the county, and they send me a little bill for $3. The last time I sent my $3 in, I think I put a credit card, or I didn't put in the rabies certificate, I don't know, anyway, so they sent it back. So between them and me, just in postage, not counting time, I would like to suggest that since we can get our car licenses, you know, for three years, that, and since the rabies shot is good for three years, that we have the opportunity to get a dog license for three years. Just, I don't know who I would approach on that, but, you know, for $9 instead of $3, I would think it would use the county's time better, save me effort. And, am I done or have I opened it? Anyway, I don't always renew because I forget.
Thank you very much. The next person signed up to speak to the board is John Brown. Okay, thank you very much. The next individual signed up is Newman Miller.
Hi, my name is Newman Miller. I am Director of Russian Program at Virginia Tech. And I just want to say a couple of things.
Could you please provide us your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, 400 Florix Street in Blacksburg.
Thank you.
I'm here to give you about three minutes on foreign language is important. You probably could detect my accent. I was teaching in middle school and high school in Russia, then Soviet Union, for about 12 years. Then I came to United States, I received PhD from University of Michigan, and then teaching American students for about three decades. And one thing, which I always start my classes with, I ask questions, like question number one, how do you call a person who speaks two lang, uh, three languages? A polyglot. How do you call a person who speaks two languages by Lingbo? And how do you call a person who speaks one language? American. And it's very sad, but it's true. Even in the Soviet Union, which was a country very far from democracy and even decency, one thing I had an advantage with, when I was in fourth grade in our school, I was learning German. Nobody asked me if I wanted to learn German. We teach a god's list, first 15 people go to learn English, the other 15 German. But it really helped me to realize that what's around me, it's not what's in the outside world, it's also made me to appreciate what different cultures do to help each other. I came to Virginia Tech 15 years ago, I was one professor in a group of 56 members of our department. We have five majors, we have now six minors, and when I came in, we only had a minor in Russia. I built a program to five professors. And last year, I'm sorry, three years ago, I received a government grant for $2.5 million to promote critical language staff. Money talks. And I just want you to understand, I know you do not tell schools what to do, and I appreciate it, because I've been told when I go to teacher what to do lots of times. But I also could tell you as a program director, it's much easier to make good decisions when you have money. So that's my speech.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sophie Midkiff.
My name is Sophie Midkiff, I live in 6109 Alphamere Lane. I'm here to address about the school funding. I have been on the Gifted Advisory Committee for a few years, and as far as I can remember, all the time I've been on the board, we've talked about budget cut, and it has been cutting and cutting. Virginia law requires the gifted program to identify 52 children in four areas, math, English, which we do. And then there are two other areas, one is history, the other one is science. We do not do any of those two, because we don't have funding. So that's the gifted program. I was also told that our art teachers' budget now is the same as 1992. That's the art program. And then the music program, I know the whole county, we don't have an orchestra, we have band, but we don't have orchestra. So the people playing, the students who play orchestra instruments cannot audition for all-state orchestra or county orchestra. The band student can't, orchestra student can't. You heard about the behind in foreign languages, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I can go on and on with the lacking of funding for the public schools. So we understand, I got a little concerned when I heard that the budget got cut again this year for $540,000 without any public hearings. It reminds me a word in Chinese, it's called a wurenzi di. Rough translation means you're wasting other children's talent. This is the word we use to describe force teachers. When the teacher do not do his job, it's wasting other children's talent. And if you are a teacher being accused of wurenzi di, there is no greater sin. It is so much worse than, let's say, a waiter doesn't wipe the table clean, because as a teacher, you have a huge impact on the person's life. Now, you're not teachers, but you're giving fundings and allocating resources for teachers, for schools, to do their jobs. It's because you don't do your job, and so they cannot do their job to educate the children, you're doing just that, wurenzi di. So when you're considering that, really state that funding, the $0.5 million, I would say that's the third minimum you should do. I would say what you really should be discussing is, on top of that money, what else can you do to help our children? So that our art teacher do not need to constantly begging money, their time to be spending on art and students. We can have an orchestra, so our children have the opportunity to audition for all-state orchestra. And we have four languages that starting from K to through 12, and there should be many of them, because languages start the early, the better. Currently, we start at eighth grade. It should really be early than that, and ideally, actually, to be emergent progress, et cetera. So when you consider your funding, please, thinking this word, wurenzi di, whatever you do, don't do that. Thank you very much. I can read this to you.
You can provide it.
No, I'm actually not, you're the chair.
The next speaker is Robert Goldstein.
Robert Goldstein, 1976, Big Bang Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I just want to start out by thanking the Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County Administration, and VDOT for saving lives on McCord Road and Big Bang Road, the intersection has finally got a line of sight in which I can drive out and turn left or right and have more than 1.2 seconds. Thank you. Now, the next item is that the road that I drive out becomes far with other roads in the area, such as Sterling Drive and Daisy Road, which are all paved now, and serve a similar population as Big Bang Road. So I would just like to read this letter briefly, I've given a copy to the clerk, and this is a follow-up letter to the document submitted to the Board of Supervisors for the September 11, 2017 meeting, requesting that, inasmuch as the criteria set forth in R-FY-09-155 for Big Bang Road to be restored to Priority One on Montgomery County's Rural Edition List has been met. In other words, one of the criteria set by this board was that there be a line of sight that meets VDOT standards, and the other is that we have the right of way and the owners of the property sign it, that they are willing to dedicate that property and give it, so that there is a right of way. I worked with Emily Gibson on that, and those papers are in order, and I believe she's the one who actually helped set this up. Please note the following, the motion, R-FY-09-155 was passed unanimously. Two, Big Bang Road has been in process for decades in the Montgomery County Rural Edition List and was Priority One by R-FY-06-103 as of January 23, 2006. Please see the attachment of the houses served by Big Bang Road, I have it on here. There's, I think, over 20 houses now. When I moved there, 38 years ago, there were just a handful. And Daisy Road, as I said, and Sterling Drive, which are off McCord Road are both paved, as should be Big Bang Road, inasmuch as Big Bang serves a similar population. In conclusion, inasmuch as Big Bang Road has this long history with the Montgomery County Rural Edition List, we're requesting again that the road be restored, as it was unanimously passed, to Priority One on that list, and I just added a definition of restored, to put back to a former place or to a former position or ranch. And that's what we're asking, that the board would both restore the road and then pave it, as I believe I heard there was some money already set aside for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, and again, forgive me for my pronunciation, I, Eping Fu. Please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Eping Fu. My address is P.O. Box 602 in Christiansburg. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the board. Interestingly enough, today we got six people speaking about the education, especially about the foreign language. Myself is a professor at Bradford University and Virginia Tech, I teach the Chinese language. Like the earlier professors, Chinese is a less commonly taught language, which is very important. I think besides the mathematics and science, actually, we want to train and actually prepare our students to be able to be a global citizen. And meaning that to learn a foreign language is not just for the outlook, for the job, for a better job, but it's actually to bridge, shorten the distance between different, different cultures, different language, to have more understanding between peoples. And I would like to actually give some background about the Chinese language. This is the most spoken language in the world. Do you know that? Maybe not everybody know that, but every five people you meet in the world, one will be Chinese. Okay, that is the most used language in the internet as well. And also, I'd like to give some background about the statistics. And in the college growth from 2002 to 2009, the growth for the college learning Chinese is 77 percent. This is from the board, the school board. And from 1997 to 2008, actually, from seventh grade to ninth grade, is 300 percent growth. Do we have any growth in this area? I don't think so. Beyond that, we not only have any growth, we decrease our funding to have the foreign language, which is very important to help our next generation to bridge the gap between understanding of different culture. I looked it up, the statistics at Virginia Tech, which is very close to our neighborhood. We have Asian student population, altogether undergraduate is 2,700, 2,570 undergrads. And then adding the graduate school, students and professional, we have 2,742. So we have more and more high school students from China. As long as I know, like last year, we imported 200 high school students coming to this area. United States is considered a gem in, for a lot of other countries, so everybody wants to come here. But are we preparing our next generation, our students, our children, to meet the kind of challenge besides the mathematics and the science? I would really like everybody to think about that, because this is the best way to erase the hatred, the misunderstanding between different race, different culture, and different language. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ken White.
Hello, Ken White, 1102 Robin Road, Blacksburg. Well, I'm a conservative citizen of Montgomery County and also a 26-year veteran of public schools, school guidance counselor for many years. And I didn't come in here that angry, but I heard something that made me feel very angry from the board, and that is, kind of throwing it back in the school system, and funding is cut, that, well, schools make their critical choices. I've seen it over and over again through different school systems, not just the one here, where the choices are made because of the lack of funding. It's not the people, the fine people who are in the school systems here that are making choices to cut things they know are hurting students, okay? choices to cut things they know are hurting students, okay? And one of the things is the foreign language I want to focus on, as well as some of the other speakers have focused on here today. My experience in schools is that if you create a new foreign language class, it fills so quickly, so much excitement about it, okay? Right now, we've got virtual Virginia that would be the answer, you know, online answer. A few students will sign up for that, okay? It is an option, of course. But you get a teacher in front of people, you make an offering, they get excited, it fills. So all of a sudden, I say, let's focus on Chinese, okay? We've heard about Chinese here. A little civil rivalry for you. Our neighbor, school system, Carroll County, economically challenged area, okay? They've had a reduction in force in their school system recently, different things like that. Guess what they have is foreign language, Chinese. Right here in Virginia Tech, we have an opportunity with such a huge Asian population in this area brought in by Virginia Tech, the cultural opportunities brought in by Virginia Tech, that we could do such an enhancement of that because of the culture that's already here with our students if we could offer it. How important is it? Well, you heard some statistics, you know, 300 percent increase, grades seven through nine across the nation, falling behind, falling behind the curve here. You know, it's one in five in the world that are speaking this language. You know, we keep saying, well, we need Spanish, everybody's got Spanish in the schools, that's well and fine, and we have a lot of Spanish Americans, but are we, what are we going about the world? Are we not a global economy? Are we not talking about we're training to promote leaders here, Montgomery County, to change the world, you know? So it isn't just math and science, as our last speaker talked about. It has to be some other things going into the curriculum that have to have the funding in order to go into the curriculum. They don't just pop up like magic. You don't pay teachers without funding. So the hard choices that are being made to not add on things are not because you're just making choices within this big budget and saying, I'm just gonna not have this in the curriculum or that in the curriculum, okay? They're because there are huge cuts. And what I would urge you to do tonight is consider the approval of the supplemental appropriation back to the Montgomery Public Schools for reasons I've stated and so many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the individuals who signed up to address the board. There may be some others, and if you would start coming forward and have a seat on the front row, each individual will be able to address the board. I always see one coming forward, so come on up. Please state your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
Hi, I'm Andy Dolph, I live at 3500 Isabel Court in the county. I'd like to talk a little bit about the North Main to 460 bypass. As they say, I've got a dog in the hunt, I live up on Brush Mountain, and for the better part of 30 years, I've lived at the north end of the county, excuse me, in Woodbine, in Indian Run, and most recently up on Brush Mountain Estates. So for the last 30 years, I've had occasion daily to traverse that intersection, going both north on my way home now, and then turning left when I lived in the other locations. Over the last 30 years, I've witnessed a lot of changes, but most recently, in the speed and the volume of traffic that's coming off of Brush Mountain. And while I appreciate that VDOT has taken notice of that, and they have come up with a solution, I would like to echo the sentiments of my neighbor up on Fortress, that we think it's really just pushing the problem from the town to the county. And those of us who live up, I can just see nothing but more and more problems. It's really a difficult time now for anyone coming north to turn back left, as many people do, to go up old Brush Mountain Road. I have a facility that I worked at at the lower end of that, and when people are coming down at 65 or 70, the speed limit lower notwithstanding, it presents a great challenge. And you can imagine someone driving something like a Suburban, not being able to make that turn. Imagine a dump truck, or an 18-wheeler, or some sort of a smaller van trying to make a similar turn. The solution to bring those people into Brush Mountain Estates is wholly inadequate for reasons of children, pets, the condition of the roads, et cetera. The current breakdown lanes that are used now to turn into both Crimson and Autumn are frequently occupied by tractor trailers who block the entrance to the subdivision, not through any particular desire to be there, but because going up that long mountain, even when the weather isn't bad, can be problematic. And there are repair trucks, other kinds of vehicles that are left there in the breakdown lanes, currently making it difficult to make the right turn into Brush Mountain Estates. So while we understand that it may be a done deal, that the intersection is going to be modified according to the way that VDOT now suggests, we hope that it isn't a completely done deal, and the folks, you folks on the county board, can help us to realize a better solution for those folks who are coming off of North Main wanting to go eastbound, that they don't have to go into, they are compelled to go into either Fortress or Brush Mountain Estates, that there's some other way. That other way we would prefer would be the modification, and admittedly, a more expensive option, but we think it's a rather callous calculus to be parting that path, that pushes that off onto the county and doesn't necessarily reduce the overall, it simply pushes it to a different place on that bad stretch of 460. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I see. Ma'am, you were next, I believe, came forward. Did you want to address the board?
May.
Yes.
I'm Julia Fallon, and I live at 3310 Gordon Drive in Brush Mountain Estates. First, I wanted to say, Mary, I appreciate your comments about I-1. I drove for eight years to work there. And I would like to see the state of Virginia follow Georgia's lead and enact the law that no trucks may be in the left lane. I think if you drive in Georgia, you'll see, I've lived in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia, and I wish those three states would enact a same law as Georgia. I think it's a safer way for the interstate to be. I saw the car Pat Ball smashed into the guardrail, as well as numerous other hideous accidents at that intersection. We've probably all seen them, if you haven't, it's terrible. My only concern is the safety of others, and myself. Since Virginia is only willing to spend money on the grand entrance at South Gate, I have no idea how much that's costing. There's only one solution for North Main that I can see that's really safe, right now. Cut off the northbound merge lane, put in a stoplight, get warning lights at the top of both ends, the top of the hill coming from Giles, the top of the hill coming from Blacksburg, and figure out a way to redirect Bishop safely. That's the only safe way. You can't put an R-cut, you can't, I had, my car, my van broke down, and I sat there in the middle of the lane, waiting for the tow truck to come, and those cars are going so fast, they're going so fast. You can't, there's no solution. The R-cut is not a solution. Driving traffic through the neighborhood is not a solution. The stoplight is really the only solution. It's my idea, you know, take it for what it's worth. Thank you so much. Thanks for all you do. I really appreciate your service to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? I believe you were next. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
I'm Dennis Fallon, I live at 3310 Gordon Drive in Blacksburg. I'm an engineering manager at Solonees. So I've worked at Solonees 30 years. My wife, Julie, and I lived in Brush Mountain since 2004. Just echoing the comments about the concern about truck traffic using Brush Mountain Estates or Fortress as a turnaround area, this is unacceptable for the reasons people articulated earlier. The roads there, the children playing, we already hear loud traffic all day long, most of the day, living in our neighborhood from the highway. The other thing I want to mention is that, I guess maybe I'm one of the few people that drives to Johns County every day, so I go to Solonees every day and work there. And I face a lot of danger when I'm coming home, because I'm coming down the mountain, and I'm gonna try to turn left into Brush Mountain Estates. Every day, I must be careful to watch cars following me down the mountain as I break. I have the turning signal on very early to warn those behind me so they move to the right lane. Some refuse to change lanes, and they slow down with me. There's no turning lane at all there. Either way, there's no turning lane. When stopped in the middle, there's very little room for my car. My car is at an angle facing opposing traffic. If bumped from behind, my car will hit the traffic head on. Now, compounding this problem, our cars leaving Autumn Lane may already be stopped in the middle strip, waiting to get on 460. The R-cut increases the risk. More cars making U-turns here adds to an already dangerous situation. Today, it's common to see cars making U-turns already. The other day, I saw two cars, as I was coming down the mountain, two cars trying to make a U-turn there, and both of them went into the center strip. They both went into the center strip at the same time. I was coming down the mountain, there's no room for me to turn, so I just headed off down. So, the bottom line is, we need to avoid moving the danger from North Main up to, up the mountain to Autumn Lane or Fortress. Some other engineering solutions needed to address this higher risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
My name is Robert Jones, 2628 Mount Tabor Road, outside Blacksburg. I'd like to point out that this R-cut road design is absolutely ludicrous. I've had experience for a long, long time with highways. That's no way to design a road. It's counterintuitive to begin with, to try to make a left turn going out of North Main Street to Christiansburg, and you can't do it. It's nonsense. Going up the hill to make a U-turn someplace, your first opportunity is at Cobay-Coll Road. That road, to my understanding, is labeled as much more dangerous than the North Main Street intersection with 460. And all they'd have to do is spend maybe $100,000, maybe $200,000, I don't know, make the exit lane longer than two car lengths. If you've ever had to go up that road, try to make a right turn onto Cobay-Coll Road with an 18-wheeler chasing you, who doesn't want to slow down because he's gonna go uphill. I try to slow down to about 40 miles an hour so I can make that hard right turn without rolling it. It's kind of hard to do with an 18-wheeler. My view is, if an 18-wheeler is chasing me, I'm going on up the road, and I may go visit Sandy in Brush Mountain Estates, and come back down when Sandy returns to the roadside. That's my only defense. Keep your eye on the rearview mirror to see who's chasing you, and whether they're gonna slow down so you can make a safe turn or not. Well, okay, that would fix part of that intersection, but throwing the traffic of U-turns onto that intersection on top of what it already is, is just unacceptable. It's massive. I don't know, I could say I don't know what they're thinking. I do, they're not thinking, they're not thinking. They're not being good engineers and trying to establish a safe environment, solve a problem in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, I believe you're behind the monitor there. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I totally agree with everybody that said stuff about the R-cut. I live on Mount Tabor Road, I go out Cobay-Coll all the time. I imagine that this would be a more dangerous solution than what we have existing right now. It's just ridiculous. This reminds me of MVP and the work that they did before they decided where to put the pipeline. This reminds me of what has happened with this process. I suggest that maybe we should take some of the money that MVP is gonna make on this pipeline and put it into the graded separated interchange, and then we'd have a safe place to drive. I'm changing now to the MVP topic. Y'all remember this map? Roanoke County Stormwater Manager just did a presentation to Roanoke City Council. They've just realized that they're gonna have to be paying another $30 million to plant sedimentation, because there's gonna be an MVP. MVP has acknowledged that there'll be a 2 percent increase forever in sedimentation. And they use this map, and they drew a circle right here, and they said, this is what has been analyzed for sedimentation. The next slide was this map with a big circle like this, and this was what hasn't been analyzed for sedimentation. That's the kind of data we're working with, with MVP. And DEQ says they're gonna give us 30 days when they finally give information on this, which they do not have yet, submitted to DEQ, that's spread 9 through 11. They're gonna supposedly submit that, hopefully correctly, September 22nd. The cutoff date is October 22nd. That's ridiculous. This is a difficult subject. We have TDMLs from Montgomery County for Cray Creek, North Fork of the Roanoke River and the Roanoke River for sedimentation, E. Colat, PCBs, various things like that. Gee, I wonder if we're gonna have to pay something as a county? I wonder if Roanoke City will sue us? Because this is data they do have. They can close this whole thing with never having this data. And Roanoke is gonna have to pay for this. They have no way out. They're downstream. I totally disagree with being able to pollute upstream and not worry about your neighbors downstream. But we do have our own problem because of TDMLs. I haven't researched enough to know what our responsibility is, who pays? Is it the people that are in the county water system? Is it us? Do we just get off scot-free? Who knows? Or do we have a lawsuit? Anyway, I have sent you today the Roanoke County City Council letter. They have written to DEQ saying, we want at least 60 days after data is in. We need to get all the data first before a decision like this is made, otherwise, we're gonna have an R-cut solution again for MVP, for this county. We can't afford that. This is, we need to pay attention and do everything we can to take care of ourselves, our citizens in our county, and I expect you, as our representatives, to be looking out for us with this. We're doing all we can to try to let you know what this is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the individuals that I've seen come forward. Is there anyone else before I close public address? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close public address, and we're gonna take a 10-minute break. So we'll get started back at 9:15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is an addendum. I do not believe that there is an addendum. And then, is there a motion to go into work session? Motion, consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Oh, wait, consent agenda. I skipped over that.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Is there a second on consent agenda? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chairperson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Chairperson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
First up is the financial year 2017 year-end report.
Oh, no, not again. We're just gonna have to discuss it. We have to discuss accrual.
Sure, because I didn't bring mine. If you got extras, thank you.
We're just gonna have to discuss it. We have to discuss accrual.
Thank you.
Only add, no accrual.
Sure, because I didn't bring mine. If you got extras, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bruder, I'm the county's budget manager, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about our revenue 2017, and then about halfway through the presentation, we'll switch over and let Angie take over and talk to you about cash position. Just to give you a little background, as we've talked about in the past, our county revenue falls into two categories. We have undesignated revenue and designated revenue. The difference is whether or not the revenue is restricted or not. The undesignated revenue is unrestricted, which means you basically can use that money for just about a purpose. Designated revenue, on the other hand, is earmarked for a specific purpose, which means that you have to use it for whatever it's earmarked for. What this chart shows you is sort of a big picture of our designated and undesignated revenue. As you can see, the undesignated revenue makes up the lion's share of our revenue structure, and you can see that we exceeded the estimate by $2.3 million, which was about 2.25% over the estimate. The designated revenue, we're actually showing an adjustment on this chart, and the reason for that is there are certain funds, which are the CSA funds and then the locally administered road funds, that in order to really compare our actual collections to the revenue, we need to pull those out. One of them is tied to expenses, and so therefore, when we didn't meet the revenue estimate, it's because we didn't have any expenses for that revenue. So, you really have to pull that out if you're gonna show that. And then the road money is a pass room, so we're just a pass room agent, and so those dollars will be received at a later date, so we can't really say that we missed the estimate, it's just we're gonna receive our numbers at a later date. So if you look at our designated revenue, we were within $5,000 at the estimate. Overall, we were within 2% of the total revenue estimate. And like those road monies, the county doesn't budget for grant revenues within the original budget due to the uncertainty of collections and the timing issue, and then the variation in fiscal years. You could have stuff on a federal fiscal year, you could have monies on a regular fiscal year, you could have monies on a calendar year, so that creates issues as far as reporting, so we don't include those in the original estimate. Again, our undesignated revenue, which is the balance of the county's, the lion's share of county's revenue, exceeded the estimates by 2.35 million, and that was mostly to some unbudgeted recovered costs and a surplus in a couple areas I'm gonna talk about. Again, the designated revenues were less than the estimates by the 2.3 million, but again, those are the CSA costs, and when you pulled that stuff out, we were within like $5,000 in the total estimate. Talk a little more about the undesignated revenue, and to be honest with you, it's a little higher than I'd like it to be, I'll tighten it up a little bit, but we had a few things that happened during the year that were unanticipated. One of the things was we had $720,000 in recovered cost revenue from the sale of the torque building and the sale of surplus property, and then we had some restitution funds. These funds were not included in the budget estimates at all, so once you pull that 720 out, it's like 1.6 million. We had $320,000 in delinquency funds due to the bringing of the personal property current due to proration. If you remember during the budget process, I talked about the fact that we would see an uptick in the current year, but that wouldn't be something that would be ongoing because as soon as we went to proration, everything became current, so when people started paying their bills, it immediately went towards the delinquency if they had one. And so, once you get through that first year, those delinquencies are gonna drop back off, so we had that uptick in the first year. We estimated, this year was the first year that we estimated for proration, and we estimated we would bring in about a million dollars due to proration. We actually brought in 1,200,000, so we exceeded the estimate by 226,000, which is pretty good considering that. But we also, in doing so, probably were a little more conservative on our other estimates because we weren't sure exactly what was gonna happen with proration, whether or not we were gonna make that million dollars, so it was good that we made that million dollars and then some. Then we had $240,000 in interest earnings due to two things. One was an increase in the county's cash balance, and then we entered into a new banking services contract, which we had an increase in the rate that we're receiving. $217,000 in retardation and deed taxes, that's linked to real estate transactions. 151 in additional real estate revenue over what we anticipated, and then we had about a half a million in other categories, which was mostly in merchants' capital and machinery and tools. So again, if we go back and we pull out that 720,000 for the monies that were not budgeted, and we compare our actual revenue to our estimated revenue, we were within 1.6 million or 1.56% of the total estimate. Give you some update on the revenue picture going forward. We're in the process of projecting revenues for fiscal year 19. The estimates will be evaluated and refined as we look at our December collections. We'll have preliminary revenue projections for fiscal year 19 in January, and then we will have final revenue projections when we present the budget in March. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Angie. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
I'm gonna just look around. Does any board members have a question for Mark before we go on to Angie?
Don't leave.
Don't leave, there may be more questions.
Mark talks so fast, I can't follow him practically.
Okay, this sheet should look familiar to you. This is, we're gonna switch now and talk about our cash balances. Ms. Perkins asked me if we were gonna talk about accrual accounting, not today, just cash basis checks.
This is an inside thing between you and me.
So, the first box shows what the general fund cash was at the end of the year, and it's just our general fund operating cash, and it has not yet been audited, but we don't expect it to change it much if any. So that was just about $38 million. And it's important to talk about this because the financial stability of the county, which is important for bond ratings and those kinds of things, depend on our operating position. And the box on the bottom left shows what the criteria are to show whether or not we have a strong operating position. The first item listed is our ability to maintain sufficient cash to pay our expenses. So if you think about that on a personal level, if your income that you, you know, you're paying, that you're bringing home is enough to cover your bills, that's good. You don't wanna have to borrow money to pay your monthly utility bills and that kind of thing. The same obviously goes for the county. The second is that we maintain reserves for emergencies. Some emergencies, we don't predict that emergency, but we know that there are contingencies that could occur, which we'll talk about those in a few minutes, and some of them could happen this year, but that's like the savings account in case, you know, the roof blew off and then you need to repair that, you gotta have some money in the bank to take care of that. And then the third item, which isn't really part of this chart, is that we always balance our budget without using fund balance, because as everyone knows, we, fund balance is what our cash is left over at the end of the year, and if we use our one-time cash to fund operating expenses, that would be an unwise practice because then the next year, we'd have to fill that hole. And the rating agencies really focus on that a lot as well. So, the next box is our estimated amount that we need for operating cash, which is about $21 million, and that is an estimate. We look at what our cash flow is throughout the year, because as you know, our cash doesn't, our revenue doesn't come in but twice a year, basically, our major portion of our revenue, but our expenses are more evenly spread throughout the year, so we have to be able to pay the bills even when we're not collecting property taxes. And I'm gonna talk, as I said, a little bit more about how we came up with that number. The next box is of the 5.867 number is how much we've already appropriated this year in fiscal year 18, since July 1st, for one-time items, carryover items that we had to carry over because they were for designated items and could be used for other purposes, and also purchase orders that we had entered into before the end of the year that we were obligated to maintain for our contracts. It also includes the school purchase orders and the school carryover that we provided, and a few other items as well. In the fourth box, that's our designated items, and that's what I was speaking about earlier. It's the second item on the financial help box. It's talking about what we have set aside as our reserves, what we know might happen, and we need to be able to take care of if it does happen. And if you think about this, we've had the fuel reserve in there for a few years, and we haven't had to need, haven't had to use that, but right now, fuel prices are really going up, so, because of what's happened in Texas, so that can be something that we would have to tap into. Some of the other things like capital reserve, we don't specifically know what that might be used for, but if a major capital need came up, we have some money set aside for that and facilities reserves as well. And then the revenue sharing projects that are shown there are the road projects that have been approached, but we have not yet appropriated. We showed you guys this sheet throughout the year, and numbers move between those boxes as we appropriate funds, and so as we go along and do this a couple more times before the budget process, you'll see that some things that are in this column will move into the appropriated column because we know that some of them will be appropriated. The final box is the amount of cash that's not spoken for at this point, which is $6.6 million, and if you look at the bottom box on the right-hand page, at this, around this time of the year, August, September, October, we do this presentation, and so I went back and pulled the numbers that match that box so that you can see that they do vary from year to year. Very significantly, and it depends on a number of factors, like how well our revenue estimates come in, if we had to cash fund a major capital project close to year end, it would drive the number down, that kind of thing, but you can see last year about this time, the balance was $7.5 million, but by the end, we had transferred some funds for capital projects and that kind of thing that brought that number back down. That was by the time we went into the budget process. So, of the $6.6 million, some items that we know we might appropriate, that you might have interest in appropriating are carryforwards for county projects, or departmental carryforwards. We have not sent request forms to departments yet. We usually wait until we make this presentation to you to do that, but we just estimated $750,000 based on previous years. Also, the requested additional school funding is listed, additional funding that's needed for the new Riner Fire Station and the Fog Branch Corporate Parkland, and then a potential use that has been discussed, some is the new garage facility. If we were to spend those funds or appropriate them, the ending balance would be $300,000.
And Angie, on that slide, I do wanna point out that under potential uses, the new garage facility at $1 million, that's not the estimate for the entire project, but that would be to allow us to begin engineering work and move forward with a plan to build the garage.
Not construction at all.
No, that doesn't include the construction dollars. It may include a little bit of construction, but it's mainly to begin the process of design and architectural work.
All right. This chart looks familiar to you, it probably shows that, Mark and I always work on this together and have discussions that, you know, we get all wound up about and no one else really cares, but we wanna make sure that the numbers that we're providing to you are accurate and that they're reasonable and that they're, they're not too large, not too small, and so if you look at the past 24 months, this shows if we started out at zero and then how much we spent versus how much we took in month by month. So it shows that in September or October of each year and in April of each year, those are our low points in cash because they're just before we collect, start collecting property taxes. Well, our very lowest point on this chart is $22.9 million. Now, where we looked at that and compared that to what we had presented last year as our cash flow reserve need, which was $21 million, that's a fairly significant increase. So we also went back and looked at what our actual cash balance is month by month, and if you go back to the page before, we're not committing every single bit of the $21 million and all of the reserves and the amounts that are appropriated for other items at one time, so we feel comfortable that $21 million is enough to cover what we need to cover and still not have to get into a bad cash position. And we've talked to Dave Porter Rogers, our county advisor, and he agreed that that was a reasonable amount as well. Well, what we looked at too was the combination of what we've already appropriated but not yet spent, and our reserves, that we should have that much cash on hand, which that's about $10 million. And when we looked at the actual cash balances for the general fund month by month, we do, that's the bottom, that's where we're bottoming out, is about $10 million. That's the final portion of time, Mark, where I can answer questions.
Supervisor Shepherd? Not at this time. Supervisor Demons?
This may seem like a very minor question, but it will help me understand something. On the where is the cash page, what is the auto graveyard?
We collect a fee for, what is it, ice cream?
For junkyard.
Yeah, it's a junkyard. I'm trying real hard, it's kinda like, you know.
If it's a slaughterhouse, we call it a slaughterhouse.
Okay, all right, for junkyards, they have to pay a fee, and then sometimes if it gets into a situation that they're not maintaining that properly and planning or zoning, or someone in Emily's department has to go in and get that cleaned up, we cover the cost with that. And so, we're supposed to set that aside so that we can, and we have since, I've been for which you know it's been 20 years, we have had to do that in the past.
Okay, that was really my only question, I just wanted to know what that was.
Supervisor Bix?
No.
No questions. Supervisor King?
No questions, just wanted, I appreciate you and Mark's hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
Thank you so much, really, this is, we get, I've had this, you've been here 20 years and
In October.
And so have I, so.
I know, right?
Thank you, thank you.
Supervisor Creed?
Nope.
I have no questions either. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Mark.
Good hang around, if we get done, we might have one later.
About 10:45.
And we can convert this to full accrual if you'd like.
The next on our agenda is rural addition program. Oh, excuse me, I skipped something, I apologize. Montgomery County School Board request for one-time funding, $540,000. Emily, thank you for that look. On tap is, does anyone have any questions of the school board? I know that they're present in regards to this, this would be the time to ask the school board. I'm looking generally. See no questions?
I think we talked about it before.
We have. So now, we are up to the rural addition program.
Good evening, I have just a few slides put together for you guys this evening, because this is in our program, we talk about a lot, and so it's been a while since I was here talking to you about rural additions, and we have a proposed change, so I just wanted to touch base on a few things. What is the rural additions program? It's a special funding, David Clark mentioned it earlier, but there's a small percentage of our secondary construction funds that we're allowed to use for rural additions. It is for construction and engineering only. Those funds are very specific, and so the right-of-way has to be dedicated, has to be clear, utilities have to be relocated out of the right-of-way, and that's not just utilities, it can be fences, walls, anything else, it has to be an unencumbered right-of-way, and a flat has to be prepared to dedicate that right-of-way, show all the utilities out of the space. For Montgomery County, and it's also an optional program, that 5% could go back into our secondary, but Montgomery County has chosen to participate. That 5% looks a lot like about $12,000 annually, and to give you an idea, the average project on our current list And to give you an idea, the average project on our current list is over $300,000. So it's not a quick funding source and most localities only do these every few years at most. When I was last here and talked to you all, we already had the petition that was pretty standard. One of the things that staff added was what we call attachment fee, and that's where someone gives us a description of what they're asking. It's really helpful for us when we're working with VDOT to make sure that we know an approximate length and just some basic information. It gives us a little bit of details because a lot of work goes in from the petition time to even being on the list. So we'll talk about that a little bit. Our current rural additions list data was pretty close, it's 11 roads long. These roads represent a variety of different needs and a variety of different issues. They've just been added over the years to the list and sort of wait their turn until the funds are available to move forward. So the request that we received this year was for Big Bang Road and I'll let you know that both attachments A and B were provided. Attachment A, which is the signature portion, indicates signatures from approximately 16 households asking for consideration to be added to the list. It also, by signing, they acknowledge that there's a need to donate the right-of-way, that free and encumbered right-of-way and any easements that are needed, and also that there's a responsibility to pay for moving and relocating those utilities out of the right-of-way. It also certifies on each of their behalf that it's not an attempt to circumvent the county subdivision ordinance. And this is an important element because, as I mentioned, rural additions is a very specific state code-designated pot of funds, has a lot of rules that go along with it and one is related to speculative interest. And so this isn't meant for someone to be able to develop property, it's meant just to be a program that helps private roads that may be in a state of disrepair or have safety issues. Attachment B was also provided, it describes the request as .04 miles from the intersection of McCoy. One of the things that VDOT has provided comments to me on is, you know, it needs to be that distance plus a cul-de-sac type turnaround and so the length really hasn't been fully vetted yet, but that's a good approximate length. Also, it outweighs the previous consideration of where the board removed this road, Big Bang Road, from the list in 2009. Should the board want to, it can add the road back to the rural additions list and I just wanted to let you know that if added, it then just triggers a nice series of steps. And so staff will work with VDOT again to talk about the length that's needed, the right-of-way width that's required, the standard is 40 feet and there may be issues with this road meeting the 40 feet, there's an exception process that would have to be gone through if that's the case. A cost estimate for the project design and construction, we have this in, I believe, $2,008, so it will need some updating and then see how it fits in with the funding structure. Staff will also work with the property owners, some of those things that I mentioned earlier about the right-of-way, the location, you know, that will involve a plat being prepared at their expense to show where that is to be dedicated. We'll also work with them however possible to find out more about the utilities that are there on the site, the cost of having those removed. We have some estimates again that are fairly dated on that, just to give them a sense of kind of what they can expect moving forward. And ultimately, that plat will get prepared and show that dedication. And once that's ready, VDOT can move forward with their engineering and construction as I mentioned earlier. So that's all I have prepared for you this evening, just to let you know that this application has come forward and a little bit about rural additions.
I'm going to ask Supervisor Shepard if you have any questions since this is in your district.
I do. When it was removed in 2009, where was it at on the list?
When it was removed in 2009, it was at the top of the list, had been for at least seven years while they tried to deal with the issues.
Okay, so that means it's been going on since 2002, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what the resolution said.
Right. I'll make people mad for you. So if we add it back, what's the possibility of getting it put back to the top?
That is completely the purview of the board. The rank, the order, I believe in 2006, there was an attempt to associate some weights based on what I've seen by reading the files, but this order, that order that I showed you doesn't reflect any kind of weighting or scoring, it only reflects the order in which they came in.
Okay. Do you know, I pretty much know why it was removed from the list. You said you didn't think the 40-foot right-of-way was there, I've been told that it was, that the issue was the site distance on McCoy Road.
So it was removed until all right-of-way and line-of-sight issues were resolved, was the language in the resolution. We did a line-of-sight safety project that provided stopping site distance, which is a little different than standard site distance, but that would be part of VDOT's analysis to see if it meets fully the site distance requirements. And right-of-way, there were some issues related to sort of an area that needed to be snaked down a little bit, again, I think it could meet that 30 feet, but that has an exception process through VDOT that we'll have to go through.
Supervisor Demons?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Supervisor Bix?
No, thank you, I don't have any questions.
Supervisor King?
The other ones that's on here, how long have they been on the list? Been a while?
It's been.
And I think it is, if I understand correctly, if I'm wrong, but if you pull it off the list and it comes back, it's got to start from the bottom, is that correct?
That has been, well, I don't know if we ever had a road come back on the list, but everything that has come onto the list has gone in the order in which it was received.
Yeah. I think that, you know, I mean, my opinion, if somebody was on the list for years and then somebody fell off, I don't think it'd be fair to put them on top of ones who was on the list for all these years. That's just my opinion.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, I think there were issues on the first, when we, I remember discussing this many times and it seemed like to me it was line-of-sight that was at the end of the road as it meets McCoy.
And there were site distance improvements that took place in the last year.
Yes, yes.
To improve that.
I remember that and I remember when that occurred too, but it really had to do with the line-of-sight distance coming out on the road.
Supervisor Creed?
No.
I don't have any questions either, thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily.
Is there a motion, I'm double checking myself tonight, maybe I need to get new biases. Is there a motion to come out of work sessions?
Some moved.
And is there a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call it a roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes to move up.
All right, so before us is now what was under new business subject day, Montgomery County Public Schools supplement of $540,000. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion at this point in time? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes to move up.
All right, so before us is now what was under new business subject day, Montgomery County Public Schools supplement of $540,000. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion at this point in time? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes to move up.
All right, so before us is now what was under new business subject day, Montgomery County Public Schools supplement of $540,000. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion at this point in time? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
As I cast this vote, I reflect back to earlier this year when the budget was passed. Some of my colleagues, members of other elected bodies, public servants, used a lot of inflammatory language in addressing those who voted for the budget. Words like immoral, unethical, and that they don't care about children with some of the verbiage that was tossed around in the press and social media. That type of rhetoric does not serve the citizens of our nation, our state, and certainly not our county. One of the more difficult aspects is the knowledge that this board has provided over $5 million in additional school funding since 2014. It is perfectly acceptable to question the validity and soundness of a decision, to disagree. But when you question the morals and ethics of those you disagree with, you can create chasms that no bridge can span and walls that cannot be breached. There's a natural reaction when you're attacked to respond in kind. If you get punched, you punch them back. In this vote tonight, there was a temptation to do just that, but to acquiesce to that temptation would be wrong. Tonight, I cast my vote to give the schools $540,000, not because of the rhetoric, rather in spite of it, because it is, in my opinion, the right thing to do and a fulfillment of the obligation I personally made. In casting this vote, I'm doing my best to put the past behind us and focus on the fact that out of a $186 million budget, we were able to agree on everything but $540,000. The chair votes aye.
Seven ayes.
Yeah. Back to old business. Resolution abandoning 0.1 mile section of secondary Route 780 from secondary Route 637 pursuant to Section 33.2-909 of the Code of Virginia.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
In regards to subject B, I'm going to refer to the county attorney, that is something that I cannot vote on. Do I need the vice chair to read what's before the board on the Habitat for Humanity?
I think you could, I think you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. On the ordinance designating a 0.943 acre lot identified as Lot 5CZL Grim Farm in the Reiner area of Montgomery County, tax parcel 09-C2, 5C, and 0.324 acre lot identified as lots 21 and 22, Section 3, Johnson Heights in the town of Christiansburg, tax parcels 497-12SEC3, 21 through 22, owned by Habitat for Humanity, to be exempt from real estate taxation. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
I will be abstaining due to the fact that Habitat for Humanity is a current client of mine and it would be, in my opinion, inappropriate for me to vote.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Next on their agenda is ordinance amendment, Chapter 10 on clean earth fill, ordinance FY18, and ordinance amending the char, chapter, excuse me, 10 entitled Zoning of the Code of Virginia of Montgomery, Virginia by amending Section 10-21 to allow certain clean fill areas as a permissive use in the agricultural district. Section 10-41 creating a supplemental regulation applicable to clean earth fill area, Section 10-48, reducing the minimum lot size for construction debris and/or rubble landfills and Section 10-61 by establishing definitions for clean earth fill area, inert waste, landfill construction debris, landfill rubble, program administrator soil and spoil respectively. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Demons?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now where am I, I've lost my.
B.
B.
New business.
I'm not sure.
Memorandum?
No, it's.
Oh, wait, no, yep.
While you're looking, I just want to congratulate Emily and the planning folks for getting that clean fill off the plate because that's been on the plate since you got here, Ed. Thank you for the work on that.
So we moved through new business and now we're to subject B, memorandum of agreement between the Virginia Department of Environmental Equality and Montgomery County, Virginia, specifically resolution providing memorandum of agreement between the DEQ and Montgomery County. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. During the break, when I was talking to Linda Major, she was asking about delaying this vote and I'm not sure, I didn't get exactly why all the circumstances except for more information. So I decided I just need to ask Marty, is there, do we have everything we need to do this or is there something else that's missing?
There's nothing I'm aware of, I mean, there's no timeframe, critical timeframe to prove it, but what this MOA is doing is, I think it's pretty clear, DEQ still has authority, they administer the program, they enforce the program. However, because of the interest in this project in Montgomery County and the other localities, they're offering localities to review and give comments, should they choose, on any ENS and stormwater plans that they approve, and you're also invited to go on inspections, either compliance inspections or any other inspections that they have as well, and to provide a contact with the county, which then I think provides us with a liaison with DEQ. So if the citizens see problems out in the field, they can call the county, the county can then communicate with DEQ and it opens up a window of communication. Other than that, we're not agreeing to anything else. We can get out of the agreement by sending a notice to Ms. Davenport tomorrow if you wanted to. So I'm not sure why you want to delay it, but I'm also saying there's, it's not critical that you put it on.
Okay, and then I have one question, while I was reading the memo of understanding, I think it was like in the last whereas, it used the word practicable to talk about going on the site visits. What does that really mean? Does that mean that?
I think what that means is, I think you get two connotations, one would be whether Scott can make it. Scott, Scott's our.
He'd be the one to go on.
Yeah, he's our county engineer, he's the one who has the expertise, he's the one who most likely would be going on inspections. So is it practical for him to go that day? Also, is it something that he can get to that day? So I think that's what that's like.
So it would be like they would just go ahead and go on when if, and not take him?
Right, I mean, but he's, they're not, I don't take it that every inspection they do, he's going.
Okay.
I think he can go when he requests, yeah.
And they don't have to be, I want to clarify, they don't have to let us do this.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Because I was trying to read through to make sure I understood it, so that was my only question on that term.
I think the most important part about this is it creates a liaison situation where we can, because there's going to be a lot of complaints once they start constructing because they're going to see.
If they start.
You know, the sanitation going maybe in the greens or something, so, or the roads, and so if they call us, then we're going to be able to call DEQ and communication lines are already open. That's the best part about this. Other than that, it's they're administering it and enforcing it. That's how the state law is set up for these type of projects.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject C, application, or, excuse me, Adopt County Emergency Operation Plan Resolution, Montgomery County Emergency Operation Plan. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess thank the staff for all the work they put into it, because those are like 97 pages of...
It is, it is something we bring back every four years, but we review it and go through it before, before we send it to you, so thank you.
There was some motion and a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next is Subject D, Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, and it looks like county attorneys report.
I have nothing to say.
County administrators report.
I'll be quick with two items tonight. One, had the opportunity to attend the VACO Region 10 meeting last Thursday evening over in Appomattox, and Ms. Perkins is our, one of our Region 10 representatives, and of course, Ms. Biggs is our VACO president this year, so it was nice to be able to go over there and see some folks and catch up with a couple of other administrators in the region. Also, I wanted to mention that we have had contact with DEQ regarding a visit to Montgomery County. I've talked with Melanie Davenport. We're trying to set something up for later this month or early in October. We're going to coordinate with their schedules, and of course, with your schedule, Melanie said they would be glad to come down and talk with the board and also visit the Slusser's Chapel area and go out and take a look as well. So as soon as I have more details on that, I'll let you know. With vacations and other things, we missed each other once or twice, but we finally talked. I guess it was the end of last, week before last, and we'll get that set up just as soon as we can. That's all I have.
Supervisor Perkins?
I just want to piggyback, because I know that Ms. Biggs will probably talk about this, and so will Mr. Meadows mentioned this, but I did attend the meeting on Thursday evening, and Ms. Biggs has been to every one of them but one. I think she has one more to go. They do, these are, put together these regional meetings for every other year, because they're quite a, what, we're 10 and there are more than this, and so I do want to say that it was very well done. Plus, I think one of the things that they, we got to talk about was common, what's our most important problem? And listening to people, Ms. Biggs had said this once before, but we have common problems, and to hear what various counties have been doing to solve the same kinds of problems we do, and the ones that we haven't been able to solve are the ones that we have to take to the General Assembly. So I did, I did really enjoy that. It was in Appomattox, and that's about a two-hour drive, and so it was, but it was very, very pleasant meeting, and I'm glad I got to go, because we had senators and representatives, or delegates, we call, to this meeting, and it's, it was good to hear them, too. Unfortunately, some of the answers that we got were the same answers that had been given for quite a while, but that's okay. Then the second thing is, I want to thank the staff for the hard work. If I start naming names, I'm afraid I'll forget somebody, but I do want you to know that we had a delightful ice cream celebration yesterday, and I want to thank the staff for putting all that together. Thank those of you who came, and if you couldn't come, I understand. And then I really was quite, I felt quite good about how everything went, and it was an opportunity, as the newspaper said, for Blacksburg and Montgomery County to get together and make a plan, and to see it come to fruition, because we were given that land about 18 years ago from, by AEP, and today, yesterday, we, Chris signed the paper, the deeds, I guess it is, so that that land was given back to, was not given back to, but was given to the town of Blacksburg, and they graciously accepted it. So thank you all again for coming and for making that a very special occasion.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, well, one of the, I attended the Chamber Business Climate Meeting, and of course, they discussed broadband again, and of course, this was an issue that has come up at every regional VACO meeting, and VACO is pushing, pushing for broadband. I don't know whatever happened, where, I mean, it didn't work out for us, right? Nothing worked out for what we were trying to do?
We did not get granted.
So we need to keep it on our burner, because it's out there, and the chamber is going to keep that, you know, going also. Some good news. Today, Carol and I and Craig were able to attend the Animal Care and Adoption Center meeting, and we had it at the center, and I think I told you last time that this Friday, September 15th, we were going to have a celebration for volunteers, so I have some more information. The good news is at 4:00, we're demoing the old shelter. There's going to be, I guess, a bulldozer or something, I don't know what, but I'm so excited to get within that range. So anyway, anyone can come, please come if you have time, they'll be at 4:00, and then we're going to recognize our volunteers, and as of Thursday, we had 512 volunteers, and so they're going to have, we're going to have food and refreshments down at the frog pond, I guess like the shelter down there, so that will be a good time for us to recognize our volunteers. They have between 60 to 90 people a day that come through that center. So that's why when you go by there, you see all those cars, it's a very active place. Of course, Carol and I ended up in the cat room, I went with Craig to visit a dog that he's interested in, and so we had quite a time. The good news is, in August, for the first time, we sent out more animals than we took in. So 188 came in, and we sent out 196. So that's good news, and, you know, it's just been a wonderful experience to watch just in four months what's happening there and the potential for what could happen later. Also, I would like to think about revisiting the ABCs, the $13,333. I don't know if there's enough consensus on the board to go back and revisit, but I want to put that out there that I'm interested in revisiting it. I was talking to David Clark about this North Main R cut. It sounds like it's a done deal, but he said if we wanted to as a board, we could still send another letter saying that we favored the interchange. He said you can send as many letters as you want. If there's support for that, I would like to do that in recognition of the citizens that came forward tonight, because I agree, I don't think it's a good solution either. Is there enough support to send another letter?
I don't know, he said we could.
We've passed the two resolutions.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if, this may be an unpopular opinion, I don't know if we should be sending a letter at this point saying we favor an interchange. I think we should send a letter saying we favor either leave it alone and wait until there's funds for an interchange, put a stop light up, something.
Do something else. Take, I...
Something other than this disaster.
I talked to him for a long time, and he said he thought that there were ways to tweak it. If we wanted to make some comments about how we can tweak it, and he said he thought it could be tweaked to the point that maybe it would be acceptable to people who were talking about it, but he said that that's about as far as we're going to get. And I think what needs to happen is we probably need to say something to the, to VDOT to do a little bit of tweaking.
Well, and to borrow from one of our speakers tonight who called it ludicrous and asinine, I think we're taking, I think the North Main interchange is the number nine, Coal Bank Hollow is the number six, most dangerous intersections in the VDOT Salem District, and we're going to repair a problem with the number nine. Like, if we make the R cut, number nine will be better, it'll no longer be number nine, but number six might be number two or one. And so it's ludicrous, what I think, in my opinion, and I agree with the person that came tonight, it's just, it's not a good solution. I think we're going to have more loss of life in the county instead of in the town, and then we're going to have a bigger problem.
He said something to the effect that the money was set, could not do anything, could not tweak it, and change the amount of money that they have allocated for that project.
It's been approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Right, but it is the Commonwealth, that's Commonwealth Transportation Board that makes any decisions ultimately about what is tweaked and what isn't, and he didn't say anything about the R cut.
Maybe just a whole packet that gives them our resolutions and then reiterates our position with a cover letter.
Right.
That would...
Yeah.
And, and we could get that out quickly?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I think it's important, and especially given the number of speakers that spoke tonight.
Well, because we're in charge, we're supposed to be providing safety for our citizens, that's one of our primary goals, and this isn't a safe solution.
No, and I would say that mentioning some of the things which people said to us tonight would be the tweaking that he's talking about, that here are some solutions that came to us, and we are offering them as to questions.
So should we just, what should we do?
Craig, write a letter.
Should someone write a letter and we just read it, or pull the packet together, or what?
We actually, we, I requested, and I sent it to Ms. Sladek, a copy of our resolution.
Right, I saw that.
And so, we can send them a cover letter and say that this is what our position is, that the R cut is not the solution, and we pass resolutions in regards to interchange, and the great separated interchange is the answer, the long-term answer, and that this is at best a short-term fix, at worst, it makes things a lot worse. I'm happy to sign that letter and send it on, and I understand that the town has made its decision, but it is affecting folks outside of the town limits.
It's making it a county problem.
Yeah, especially A and F.
And that's, that's where I, normally, if this was inside the town, I would not want to do that, but I think that the effect on the county citizens isn't negative. So if we can get a quick draft, is there consensus in that letter?
It's done, I think he felt that way.
And then my only other question, the letter about the pipeline that we got, the Ronak one, are we just, we're just looking this over to see if we want to do something like that, or what are we?
I want to look at it at least.
Yeah, is that what we're going to do?
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
I've written all over it, but I haven't had a chance to really read.
That's all I had, I just wanted to see if we were going to look at that.
Supervisor Motts?
I'll be very quick. Fish fries are done for 2017, so your next opportunity to enjoy a Mount Taber Ruatan Club fish fry will be May 12th, 2018. Go ahead and mark your calendars now, but we will be debuting breakfast on Saturday, October 14th. We are in the process now of getting our apples, going to the cannery, making apple butter, and so breakfast will feature Mount Taber Ruatan Club locally-made apple butter, which is not to be missed.
Eight to 10?
Uh, the breakfast will be, I believe it's eight to 10, we have to get there at 6:30.
And that's October 12th, is that right?
October 14th.
14th.
And then, just wanted to re-mention Sustainability Week, and one event specifically, I'll be giving a presentation on September 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Alexander Black House. That's a Petchacucha-style presentation, 20 by 20, 20 slides, 20 seconds per slide, and they advance automatically, so I have no control over how fast the slides advance. So that'll be a very interesting evening, if anybody is looking for something to do Wednesday, October 20th, September 20th.
What was that word again?
Petchacucha.
Because I heard somebody describe that same...
20 by 20?
But it was, yeah, but it was called rapid fire, I didn't know it was a Petchacucha.
Well, it's blackspur, I don't think we use the terms rapid fire.
From eight to 10, right?
From 6:00 to 8:00, that's September 20th. And then I would like to also lend my support to at least having the request for $13,333 by ABCs, maybe put as about, as an item for a vote in an upcoming meeting. That's it.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any report.
Supervisor King?
Just real quick, with Fire Prevention Week coming up, if you have a wood stove, fireplace, whatever, now's the time to have your flues cleaned. Don't wait till you have a fire in the house.
And we have to call you.
Yeah. And go out and visit your fire and your rescue departments, just go out and talk to them. They have a lot of information they give you for the winter time.
That's all.
That's good.
Well, for me, we've got the Planning Commission meeting a week from today at Smithville. I believe that starts at 6:00, if I remember right, and so I'm looking forward to that meeting, and the second thing, and I wish I was going to be short, it's a late night, and I apologize, but I've had the opportunity to speak with many of my other supervisors, and I would like to know if there is a consensus to have our staff explore the possibility of bringing the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer under the board. If there is such a consensus, then I would ask Marty to provide us the legal steps about doing that, specifically the referendum and what steps this board would need to take. I'd like the staff to research out and provide the positives and negatives financially and for efficiency of bringing both the Commissioner and Revenue underneath the board of supervisors. I'd also like the Human Resource Staff to discuss the protections that the staff would gain by no longer being under a constitutional office, and I would forth like to see us be able to provide expenses to have other elected officials and staff who've gone through this experience. But if there's not a consensus to explore this possibility, that's a lot of work that we're going to be asking the staff to do, and I think that we have a unique opportunity from speaking with the Commissioner of Revenue, it's my understanding that she is not planning on running again, the Treasurer's Office, and I'm not certain whether Mr. Shelton is running again, but we have both of them coming up for reelection in a couple of years, and the referendum could come before that potentially. I think on its face, there could be savings to the county in efficiency, but I don't know, and until we get good information, I won't be able to take that vote, but I certainly don't want to have the staff do all that work needlessly. And so I guess at this point in time, I'm looking for a consensus vote, whether we should move forward with something like that and explore that possibility, or whether there's not support on the board to explore that. And so I'm looking for thumbs up, and I'll know if folks want to look, think about it, if you want to think about it in a meeting. I know I've spoken, I believe, with everybody here about that possibility, or if folks are ready to decide to have the staff explore it, but I would shoot for maybe a meeting in October. The only bad thing about utilizing a meeting in November, we typically only have one meeting because of Thanksgiving and VACO, and might make it very difficult to do it in that, in that month. So folks, is there consensus, is a thumbs up to explore? I see one, two, three, four.
I'm not ready to stick my thumb up yet.
All right, there, I see five with...
One, and I...
I'm not saying vote four, I'm saying explore.
Yeah, and it's important to me just to say, and I've told you this when you and I spoke about it, I don't think that there's anything wrong with learning about it, and so of course, I'm open to that, and I also like, you know, that that'll be a discussion that's held in a public forum, because it's not just a decision that we have to make, it's a decision that...
The voters.
We would want citizen input on, and so of course, I'm open to the idea of learning about it, but that doesn't necessarily translate into any type of future commitment.
I don't have a commitment for it.
Are there anyone who is opposed?
I would like to make a comment. I, you know, I don't mind learning about it, but I do know that it's a very contentious issue when it's come up before in different localities, and the, both the Treasurer and the Commissioner belong to very strong associations, and another thing you have to think about is when you take on the employees that are... I do know that it's a very contentious issue when it's come up before in different localities. And the, both the Treasurer and the Commissioner belong to very strong associations. And another thing you have to think about is when you take on the employees that are currently paid for by the Compensation Board, you will no longer receive those monies from the Compensation Board of Virginia. So there's a lot to look at, there's a lot to think about. I believe at one time, now, did Roanoke County do it and then reverse it? What happened there?
That's one of the things that I want to explore. I know like Albemarle County did, and they've gone forward, and it's worked. But I want the staff to reach out to the places where it didn't work, because I want us to be able to have an informed decision to see if it does make sense.
Have we talked to our Commissioner or Treasurer?
I've spoken with the Commissioner, and I've had a couple of lengthy conversations with her. I think that she's done a fantastic job with proration. I think she came before our board numerous times and said, "All I need is one person," and that's exactly all she needed. And tonight, Mark's presentation was, she's doing a great job. And I'm not, this is no reflection on either one of them. This is, do we need to take the steps to move forward? Is this the right decision for the county to make?
Well, do you do it with any other constitutional officers, like?
I don't know that it's allowed. I'm looking at Marty. There's, that's the only two under the county that I would be looking at doing. And really, if both of them are up for reelection at this point in time and the like, and I think we've got a unique opportunity. But at the same time, you're right, Mary, the Commissioner of Revenue's Association is not going to be nice, and I don't believe that the Treasurer's Association-
They're very strong.
And so if we're not ready for that, if the right decision is to go that way, we've got to be tough, and we've got to be able to take some criticism from some folks outside the county.
Now, here's my other question. It sort of goes with your concern about a timeline for staff. Okay, when, I gather, staff is always working on budget, but how does this interplay with what staff has to do with budget or any of that? And how much time maybe Craig and Marty know would something like that take to find out all that? Do we know any of that?
I think right now, all we're being asked to do is do some research. Now, you know, once the research is done and presented to the board, the board may give some direction based on that. And that could take some time, but I honestly don't know at this point.
Okay.
What about doing the budget time? Because that does bother me, too. I mean, it's not-
Well, I would think the research would be done within 30 days, so that's not going to get us into-
Okay, so it's not going to affect you?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to check. Okay.
Not that step. Now, if there's subsequent steps, we may have to-
Well, I know this was brought up once before, and nobody was in, you know, it was at that time that nobody was in favor of. But it's not that I'm not in favor of it, it's just that I was thinking about the staff time, the budget time. But if you can get a body of research in 30 days that will really tell us the pros, the cons, the drawbacks, the reason for doing it, and then what do we lose in terms of money? What do we lose in terms of being able to deal with citizen problems, citizen who come particularly with the tax payments to the Treasurer's Office? Most of the citizens I know especially are very careful about paying their taxes, getting them in, and even look at it as a good thing, they're able to do it. So I don't know. I just, I'm not opposed to learning about it at all, but I'm just, I'm just not ready to move forward with it, other than to get some research.
I'm not asking anybody to vote uninformed. And the only thing is, there may be some funding costs to provide. Let's say that somebody comes from Albemarle or Northern Virginia to pay for their hotel rooms, to pay for their travel expenses, so we can, and invite them, so we can ask them the questions. But the bottom line is, it will be the citizens who will be making the decision, but it will be our decision as far as, and well, part of it is Marty providing us a legal background on that. Yes.
And I've told you this, that I'm open to bringing people here, because there's nobody that can better talk to us about it than those that have gone through it. I expect that as we're considering this, we'll probably hear some pretty impassioned arguments from the Treasurer's Association and the Commissioners Association. I would ask if you might also consider funding to bring maybe a director or chairperson, or however they're structured, somebody like that here to give us the argument.
If somebody, and I don't have a problem with one of those folks, if we need to put them up at a hotel or pay for their mileage, I think making informed decisions is the best way.
Right, absolutely.
And I know that this is some heavy lifting, but it seems to be the best time. If we're going to explore it, it would be coming up in the 2018 election. So, all right. So, Mary, from what I heard from Annette was that she was in favor of exploring it, but not-
Yeah, getting the research, but I'm not ready to put my thumbs up and say, "Okay, you know, let's go ahead," because I don't know. I'm trying to recall all of the things that we talked about once before when we talked about this situation. And, you know, at that time, we weren't ready for it, but-
All right, at this point in time, and Mary, I didn't, are you?
Yeah, I said I would, I would support looking at the, I just wanted to bring those